I'd like to call this meeting to order if you'd please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Gearbaugh, CEO McClellan, Mitchell, Dillon, and Mayor Protam Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, police chief Hart, city superintendent engineer Rubel, excuse me, DPW director Fordice, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, and wastewater treatment superintendent Weigowski, I don't believe is here yet, but he should be arriving momentarily. At this time, I would entertain a motion, actually, I believe Mr. Gearbaugh wanted to amend the agenda, and Dean, you can tell me if I'm incorrect on this, you wanted to bump up new business items 18-137 and 18-139 to the top of new business, is that correct?
Correct. I don't want to have them wait all night long. I think we can do some discussions.
Do you want to move then, Mr. Gearbaugh, to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Tahar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As of now, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will proceed to my charter sanctioned midyear state of the city address. The clerk has copies, as does the city manager, and he's distributing them now. Good evening, city council, city manager Campbell, city clerk Royal, distinguished guests, and my fellow citizens. It's a privilege to share remarks again this evening and provide our community with a midyear update. Let me begin by expressing my gratitude and thanks to Mr. Nick Donafrio from Grand Sacra Homes LLC for graciously sponsoring and underwriting the recent Fourth of July fireworks. It was a marvelous show, and I received many positive compliments from community residents. With the assistance of Grand Sacra LLC, we intend on making this an annual event, and in the coming months, we will work to establish a working committee to plan and coordinate for 2019. I envision an enhanced event in a year's time with additional amenities, including food, music, and activities for children. Clearly, these types of community events are important, they are valued by our citizens, and they help ensure Celine's status as a unique and desirable place to live and invest in. Now, today, as I stated in January, Celine is on a trajectory to prosper, to continue to meet the needs of our residents, and to address difficult and challenging issues. First and foremost is odor abatement at the wastewater treatment plant. Let me be very emphatic. While this has been an issue for a number of years, the current frequency and severity of noxious odors is not acceptable, and it has a direct impact on our residents' quality of life. Accordingly, city council and city staff have spent considerable time and energy working to resolve this matter. In fact, I'm not sure of another issue that has consumed more time or attention in the past few years. As many are aware, our odor abatement plan will require construction, installing new equipment, and will eliminate approximately 99 percent of odors. Our constituents should also know that we are taking steps on an interim basis to mitigate odors, specifically adding chemicals to the headworks on a daily basis. However, if residents experience offensive odors they believe are coming from our wastewater treatment plant, they are encouraged to promptly call Director Steve Weigowski at 734-944-2003. Steve is one of our newest employees, but he comes to us with a wealth of experience and is well-versed on this particular issue, and he and his staff are always eager to help. In conclusion, I believe that we now have the analysis and background to properly resolve this critical matter, we have a solid plan in place, and residents should expect tangible results in the near future. Economic development and business attraction and retention will remain my primary focus. It is certainly not my only priority, but it will remain my primary focus, because I know that a truly strong, robust, and diverse local economy benefits all of our residents. It provides jobs, supports city services, and adds amenities that increase the desirability of the Celine community. As our residents are aware, our efforts to support and incentivize economic development have resulted in a number of tangible gains in recent years, and we will continue to proactively engage with both our large and small business communities, notably through forums and luncheons that will take place later this summer and early fall. Additionally, I'm excited to announce that we have multiple parties interested in Lot 20A along Michigan Avenue, adjacent to the Zippy's Car Wash, and the future Best Western Premier Hotel and standalone Ace Hardware. City council will have a working session sometime in the near future to discuss the various proposals. The community recruitment and retention team, which is comprised of representatives from the chamber, city, schools, and Celine Main Street, continues to work with property owners and budding entrepreneurs. This team is aware that one of the major challenges facing our business community is access to talent and the ability to retain employees. As such, and this is only mildly hyperbolic, we will be organizing what is essentially a job sphere on steroids called Find Your Future, coined by John Olson from the Celine Chamber. This event will take place later this year and will include transportation, connecting job seekers with potential employment in our area. As further details are finalized, please look for additional information on the internet and social media. The city will also continue to work with business and property owners on our western and eastern borders to ensure their success and their vitality, and we will continue to extend a hand of support and encouragement to the owners of 147 West Michigan Ave, because development of that site will strengthen and enrich our downtown and ultimately the entire city. Another important component of economic development is growing and diversifying our housing stock. I am intensely proud of the city's efforts to reach a mutually beneficial agreement with our friends in Pittsfield Charter Township to acquire nearly 72 acres for redevelopment. Layer Farms will be a great addition to our city, offering new and attractive housing to our residents and simultaneously growing our tax base. Further, we have been pleased to work with quality developers like Three Oaks LLC, Livonia Builders, Peters Building Company, Lewis Klein Company, and Polty Homes. In fact, Polty Homes just received final site plan approval for Phase 3 of Huntington Woods by the Planning Commission, and Phase 3 final site plan is on city council's agenda this evening for consideration. We are delighted that this one stalled development will soon be completed. We're also pleased that there appears to be a path forward for the Fairdean Development on Monroe Street. Mr. Farrell is with us this evening to present his revised plans and has petition for a rezoning request that will appear on Planning Commission's agenda this Wednesday, July 11th. We are eager to see this development finalized and will support Mr. Farrell in every reasonable way. Finally, city council should be aware that later this summer, I will be requesting the formation of a work group to prepare, excuse me, revised plans for Merchant's Park, adjacent to parking lot number one. Again, this space is unattractive and underutilized, and proving it will enhance the usability of our downtown and make it more aesthetically pleasing, and I am confident that we can accomplish this with nominal cost to our taxpayers. Earlier this spring, city council adopted their general operating budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and as I've stated in the past, our budget is a reflection of our values and priorities, and this budget invests in areas that our citizens value most, while maintaining the mileage rate of the past several years. This budget also includes additional funds for the Department of Public Works, specifically a new full-time employee, and adds a school resource officer to the ranks of the Celine Police Department. In addition to our improved bond rating and burgeoning assigned fund balance, we also had funds in our unassigned fund balance that we have allocated to a few select road projects and have earmarked approximately $300,000 to pay down our pension and healthcare liability, which of course is the responsible and wise thing to do. Similar to our approach in evaluating dispatch, the Celine Police Department, and Celine Parks and Recreation, I hope that city council will approve an organization-wide review later this year. I believe this is critically important, it may yield cost savings, but more significantly, it may provide insights on how we can better serve the people we represent. By the end of this construction season, we will have completed important road projects, including Harper Drive, Colony Court, the approach to the south side of the Monroe Street Bridge, the entrance to Northview Subdivision, Woodland Drive, South Harris Street, Michigan Ave to Henry, and sections of North and South Ann Arbor Streets. No doubt, this work will have a positive impact on our community. However, we can and should be doing more. I have used each one of my state of the city addresses to talk about the lack of funds to subsidize our infrastructure needs. As such, I am pleased that city council unanimously approved a ballot proposal that is likely to generate in excess of $400,000 annually and will allow us to improve the conditions, uh, conditions, excuse me, of our local streets and roads. As we approach the November election, our citizens should expect to see additional information on this topic and know that we will hold a series of public events to discuss the impact of this proposal, assuming it were to pass. It's worth noting that we are proposing a pay-as-you-go approach, which I strongly favor. We must resist the temptation to incur additional debt to fund city operations. This approach, our approach, is both fiscally sound and prudent. To me, the choice is clear, but the decision belongs to our residents. I look forward to a robust discussion between now and the fall election. As I've articulated in the past, one of Celine's most valuable assets is our recreation complex, and as many are aware, we have invested significant funds in the facility in recent years. And I am pleased with the strong growth in membership, and I encourage my fellow citizens to check out the rec. We offer personal training, a number of league sports, and a litany of classes that can be enjoyed by people of all ages and skill levels. Also over the years, many of us have championed the rec-on-the-go program, and I was delighted to hear about current participation levels, which appear to be the best ever. This is an outstanding program with the added benefit of being free. I encourage parents of school-aged children to learn more by going to our Parks and Recreation website. Friends, ensuring that our public safety professionals have the resources they need to do their jobs effectively will continue to be a priority of the city of Celine. Our community is exceptionally well-served by the men and women of the Celine Police and Fire Departments, and I'm excited that, uh, I'm excited, excuse me, about the emphasis our new chief, Jared Hart, has placed on recruitment and expanding volunteer opportunities within our department. He recently launched VIPS, Volunteers in Public Safety, a program that has proven beneficial in departments across our state. If you are interested in learning more, or if you wish to participate, please feel free to contact Chief Hart directly. After months of careful review and analysis, city council adopted a revised and strengthened non-discrimination ordinance. This was a major step forward for our community and ensures that all of our residents will be treated fairly and protected under local ordinance. I appreciate all those who helped to bring this policy to fruition. Thank you. We have some exciting seasonal events coming up and some that are currently taking place, including our downtown farmer's market, summer music series, Summer Fest and Oktoberfest happening later this fall. This week, the city will host its 23rd Annual Celtic Festival at Milpon Park. This is a regionally recognized event, and this year it becomes one of a handful of family-friendly craft beer festivals in the state of Michigan. The Celtic Festival is a marvelous event, and I hope to see you there this Friday and Saturday. Finally, to all those who make these events and activities possible, we thank you for your contributions, your, excuse me, your contributions are noticed and very much appreciated. On a related topic, volunteerism, however it may manifest itself, will always be encouraged in the city of Celine. We are always looking for quality applicants to serve on boards and commissions, and we know that our service clubs and community organizations are in need of support as well. Please consider getting involved. I guarantee you'll enjoy it, and it will improve the lives of countless individuals in our area. Also, if you ever have a question or concern that pertains to city government, please contact us, we are here to serve you. I encourage each of my constituents to connect with us online and on social media, download the free See Click Fix app to your smartphone, and don't forget to review the information that is provided quarterly via our FYI newsletter. Last, I want to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of my colleagues on city council, Mayor Protam Linda Tahar, Jack CEO, Janet Dillon, Dean Gearbaugh, Heidi McClellan, and Kristen Mitchell. I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank our very talented and experienced team of city employees, provide world-class service to the Celine community on a daily basis. Finally, I know that if we continue to collaborate with area stakeholders, focus on a shared vision that emphasizes the importance of economic development, investing in critical public services, while remaining open and accessible to the people we represent, our best days will be ahead of us. Thank you, may God bless you, and God bless Celine. Okay, friends, moving on, uh, moving on on the agenda this evening, we have two presentations. First up is an update on Nova filters from Dan Lloyd. Dan, we welcome you, and perhaps Mr. Rubel from Tetra Tech to join us up front. We appreciate very much you being here, and I know that you were previously scheduled to be here, I think a month ago. We understand that your mother passed, and on behalf of myself and my colleagues on city council, we want to extend condolences to you and your family.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, my friend.
Well, this is my second time here. I ideally would not have needed to be here, but we continue to have some issues at the plant dealing with the mechanical reliability of the equipment, so I was asked to come and answer questions, and that's my intention tonight as opposed to presenting a formal presentation, which would be mostly a lot of mechanical minutia to laypeople. I think it's more important to discuss the overall conceptual performance of the equipment and to give you the opportunity to ask questions that you may have. So, from where we started a year ago, we've made very good progress on the reliability of the equipment. I had told you when I was here last year that these machines are of the larger size capacity of the equipment that we make of this configuration, and that smaller machines in general had been very reliable. I sent you a note following that meeting that when I went to D'Wajiac to look at the installation and examine some of the same parts we had trouble with here, we found some indications that there were some similar issues going on over there. So, in the sequence of identifying problems, collecting samples, having them analyzed for failure mode, getting professional input into what the necessary corrections were, we have dealt with three of the main critical problems that we had with the filters, and some of those problems were from an original design consideration, some of the problems were actually quality-related of how parts got made, and then the reoccurring problem we had inside the machine with the wheel that rotates the filtration assembly. This is a vendor item, that's a specialty part that we buy from another supplier, and we've worked with them on a continuous basis to analyze what the failure modes are, try to determine the root cause, and to improve the design of the parts, which brings us to the present day, and those parts are currently installed here on one of the two filters to run in a comparison mode with the second filter to validate that the most current improvement in the design of that item is going to bring permanent reliability to the operation of the machine. And I'll take questions.
Very good. Before I open up for questions, Mr. Rubel or our wastewater treatment superintendent, anything you'd like to add at this time? Brian, you're good?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Steve, you're good this time? Okay. Questions from city council? Start at the end, actually, I'll start at the end of the dais with Mr. CEO and end with Councilwoman Mitchell. Mr. CEO, the floor is yours.
Mr. Lloyd, thank you for coming. We too are not, uh, we appreciate the fact that you've spent your time to come here and meet with us once again. We also appreciate your adherence to this, uh, this issue that's been somewhat problematic over the, since the installation of these filters. In your estimation, are you optimistic about the future of this filter design you have here?
Yes, I have, um, I have to be capable of seeing through where we are to where we know that the concept is supposed to be, and it may be difficult from where you sit to be able to see that when we originally started the equipment up, we were immediately encountering three separate problem issues. It all occurred simultaneously, and when you face a situation like that with manufactured equipment and you've got three different problems all happening at the same time, it can be very difficult for you to analyze whether one problem created the second problem. So our initial response was to get immediate repair to the machine to get it back into service, and then to begin the process of sorting out which problem may have been the precursor to a second problem, and we're quite far along with that effort at this point, and I think we've got it narrowed down now to where of the original three categories of problem, I believe we're down to the final one, which is this vendor buyout item with this specialty wheel that's inside the machine. I believe that's the final item that will be resolved here, and as I said a moment ago, that specific part is actually on the machine, one of the two, and being tested now.
Very good. I again want to thank you for hanging with us on this issue and providing the service that you have.
With, uh, with your kind words, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that we see this as first and foremost, we have a moral obligation to make right the equipment that we provided. We're, we're not fly-by-night people. I've been in this business since I was 20 years old. We're, we're not going anywhere until we get this right.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dillon, any questions?
Um, yes, actually I do. First, thank you for being very attentive and very swift at your repairs. I mean, that's really made a big difference for us. Following up on what Mr. CEO said, I'm not sure which problems you're identifying as these three issues. It seems like every meeting we're getting, there's, there's new issues coming up, and there's a, excuse me, Mr. Campbell, is it, is it the filters, the backwash? What is that that we now are having an issue with?
Well, the, right, the, the, the baskets.
Baskets.
Right, but I think that, that's actually, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a, that's a bigger problem for, for our side with the amount of solids that are coming through. I think that's, uh, from our discussions that we've had, so that, so, um, that's partly a, a big part of that, so I don't know that that's necessarily an issue, a design issue for, for the filters.
Okay, can you clarify that as to where that issue is coming from then?
Well, I, I guess I would ask, Steve, if you could come up with more technical aspect of it?
Sure. I've got one minute here.
Steve, why don't you come to the podium and speak in the microphone, because we're recording this meeting, and we want to make sure everyone's able to hear.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So, as you know, I've just been here a short time. So my understanding is we have a lot of solids in the plant that we're trying to get the solids hauled off, but we still have a lot of solids in the plant, and as the solids come over the weir into the backwash, they go through the filter and they're coming into the backwash pump, to protect that pump, there's a pre-filter. So my understanding is that had been plugging frequently due to those solids that had been here in the past.
Okay, so that's an issue from not being pumped out? Is that what's being implied?
Well, I think that, that's, that's part of it, it's also a part of, um, we have an older process, right, with the RBCs, um, and, um, so when, um, I think we have two or four of the train, um, of the RBCs that are currently offline, or are, I know you're working towards that.
Four of them are trying to get back online, and I believe they had a problem with the clarifier being down, which is, does what it says it would do, should clarify the, the water, so we had, we're bypassing that to the other ones, so I think there were more solids coming over into the filters than was anticipated.
Okay. Um, I'll leave that discussion for our discussion period. I assume we'll talk about wastewater at the end, and I'll just stick to the filters now. Thank you very much for that. Um, you had mentioned D'Wajiac, are, so they're experiencing similar failures?
Well, several of the parts that we've had trouble with here, we had trouble with at D'Wajiac. It took several additional, uh, operating months for those problems to appear, but it actually turned out to be a positive thing for us. I know it sounds counterproductive when you say, yes, we had trouble there too, but the reason why it would be, became productive for us, because it gave us an opportunity to have two different locations for the development of the solution for it. And when a machine is working here in Celine, we're very hesitant to come in and say, well, we're going to shut the machine down and change this part, but if the machine at D'Wajiac had a similar problem, I can have that next generation of that improved part put in there, and I get a chance to study its performance there. What I'm learning there, I can then use to solve my problem here. And the, um, challenge in a business like ours is that we need to keep the machines online, number one, of all considerations. We have to keep the machines in performance because permit compliance is at risk if the machines are not operational. So, when we have a problem, we have to analyze the failed part, we have to go back and change the way it was made or the way it was designed. We then have to make that part in the number of units it's necessary to come back and do the retrofit. Then we have to give that part opportunity of operating cycle to be able to examine what it's doing, and if it's doing everything we want, we're done with that item. If we're still not getting 100% of the reliability we want, unfortunately, we have to go through an additional cycle of getting the failure, analyzing it, correcting it, making a new part.
Okay. So, your company was obviously very successful. What is brought about this change? Is it because this is a bigger filter? Is that what you, that what you had indicated earlier, that this is a different size, a different style than what you're normally producing?
The capacity of wastewater treatment processes falls into categories of size. You have a particular size of capacity that's needed here. In order to fulfill that, we need a machine of the given size that we sold here. You have one of the larger machines that we make. We make machines that are yet larger still than this, but you have one that's in the larger category. D'Wajiac has a slightly smaller version of the same technology. And where the issue is, is that we had made what we intended to be some design improvements to simplify the machine, to reduce the operator maintenance requirement on several of the parts, and in the process of doing that, some errors got made, and this is why we have the issues we do. It's, it's nothing that the people at the plant are at fault for, this is, these are mistakes that we have made.
So then, the errors are design flaws, or are they manufacturing issues?
As I said earlier, they're in three categories. There were some engineering mistakes, there were some errors in production quality where things got made that didn't get made exactly the way they needed to be, and then the third category are the specialty buyout items that I buy from other vendors, because they're specialty items that you have to buy them from the people who know how to make them. It's, uh, look at the automobile industry, the people who make tires don't try to make engines.
Okay. So of those three categories now, have you found the root cause of the design flaw, and has that been corrected?
Yeah, the, the design issues.
And now it's, it's a successful design?
Design issues have been solved.
Okay.
Quality issues have been solved. We're down to this final item of the vendor, the specialty vendor part that I buy out.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, how long have we been online?
About two years, um, that, from when it was first installed.
And of that time, what's the longest period of time that we've been?
I believe 58 days.
Fifty-eight.
That sounds right.
And where are we now?
Well, I think, I don't have an exact date, uh, but I know in June, I know we had some issues with the screens, um, but outside of that, um, they, they have, they have been making progress. But, um, so, uh, we would, um, start the clock ticking back, and I apologize, the, the date in June.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Mayor Protam Tahar, any questions?
Um, no, but a couple, no, no questions, but my questions have been asked, but a couple of comments if I might. First, I'd like to thank you for your candor about the problem-solving process and the source of the, of the issues, and also very much for your commitment to seeing this through to a well-functioning machine for us, and thank you for sticking with it, and, and I especially appreciated the explanation of problem analysis. I mean, it, it seems very, it's, it's good to know that it's not a simple figure-out, that it takes time and, and analysis, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tahar. Mr. Gearbaugh, any questions or comments?
Um, just a few, kind of similarly on the lines as Ms. Dillon. I appreciate that you are here explaining to us some of the issues. My understanding and concern on part of this is the field testing that seems to be of occurring. It's as if the product that we received did not have as much quality control or, I guess, proving being done on your facility or your part. And as you know, as a result of that, we've had to expend significant hours of manual labor, our, our own labor, our staff's time, and everything else in order to maintain things. How do you see going forward, and that's one of our biggest concerns, is reliability on this product, that you will have it result- on this product, that you will have it resolved so that we don't even know what an expectation is in terms of what is a reasonable period of time that this should run without any mistakes?
Well, it's a fair question, and your observations have merit. The, the vast majority of the mechanical work that's been needed to repair the machine, we've, we've paid for. We've brought in Titus Mechanical from outside of town. I send my own people up here. We've brought in the, the people in the majority of the time to do what's necessary. You have housekeeping issues at the plant that require a certain amount of time. The thing with the strainer basket that he was talking about, we, we can't solve those problems. The, I, I told you this last year when I was here. The people you have running the plant are producing phenomenal results based on the technology that they own to work with. You do not have a modern wastewater treatment plant. If I'm the first one giving you this bad news, I apologize, but, but you don't. And if you had a more modern plant, it wouldn't have solved the mechanical issues with the filter, but it would greatly reduce the amount of solid material that's going to the filters that is causing the operational cycle to work very aggressively to capture the material and take it out. And when you look at a wastewater treatment process, anybody who's ever made coffee, you look in the bottom of the cup and sometimes there's grinds in the bottom. Those are suspended particles. That's what the filter is designed to remove. The color in the coffee, we call that dissolved solids. Filters don't remove that. So it's possible for you to have dissolved things that are in the plant effluent that the filter can't catch regardless of what we do. Our obligation, first and foremost, is to get the mechanical reliability of the product to be very steady and very reliable consistently. And obviously, we thought we had that done before we delivered the machines, and we were wrong. So knowing that we can't go back in history and change any of these things, what we can do is we can be direct, we can give honest answers, we can face the people who are paying the cost for the equipment that we sold, and we can explain to you in as much detail as what you want to absorb exactly what's gone wrong and what we're doing about getting it right. And in that regard, we, we have no intention of backing off until we have this 100% finalized. And I think we're getting very close. In fact, I'm optimistic that when you invite me back next year, we're going to have a much different back and forth with the state of how things are working. That doesn't mean the rest of the plant won't have other issues for you to, to deal with going forward. But I, I want to make the filters to be not one of them.
And that may be one of the questions that we'll have to discuss because of when we decided to take on this remodeling of the plant, the consideration was that the parts and the company that did the, the design and the assessment of what we needed accounted for all these issues. And now that's starting to raise a flag that that may not have occurred, is what you're saying. Because you're saying that we don't have a modern plant, but we just put significant money into upgrading it.
We, well, you, you can make whatever interpretation you would like in that regard. The, the standard cycle of wastewater treatment plant upgrade and improvement flows exactly like your project did. You identify where your key issues are. You identify where your key permit compliance challenges are. And if they're related to what we call total maximum daily load, TMDL requirements, removing particles from the effluent requires filtration. And filtration, taking those particles out reduces how much material is going out in the effluent and helps you meet permit. That doesn't solve necessarily everything for the future of your, your needs over there.
Right. And we understand that. But I was trying to understand at this point how we got to where we're at. And as you mentioned, that you had smaller machines and larger machines and trying to figure out.
Yes.
What we have currently, you feel that we'll meet our needs for the size of the plant that we currently have and what we basically are working with?
We're not.
Because I'm now starting to worry about when it was installed and how it was built for the capacity and the specs, or the specs that we provided. Will we have an issue in the future fairly soon?
When, when, when the wastewater treatment facility produces, are you familiar with the, the process sequences at the plant? When the clarifier secondary effluent comes to the filters and has suspended solids concentration of 20 milligrams per liter or less, the filters easily meet the removal criteria. When the clarifiers are loaded up with excess solids from, from the challenges of the winter of not being able to do land application and get rid of the solids inventory, then the clarifiers tend to carry higher TSS out of the effluent that goes to the filters. There is a removal efficiency that it, it just violates the laws of physics to say that you can do more than what the filter is capable of.
But if our processes are in place and they're all being done, we have, you know, not an issue with the sludge or any of that type of thing, your filters and the maintenance should be routine. There shouldn't be something where we should expect this kind of problem.
That is an honest statement, and I agree with it totally. We're, we know a lot about wastewater treatment. But our first obligation is to get the mechanical reliability of the filters to where we know it's supposed to be. And then we're more than willing to help optimize the performance of the filters and come up with maybe some suggestions of how to make the maintenance cycle the least demanding on the plant staff. But when you're fighting the house and it's on fire, worrying about whether the kid's bicycle has been left out in the yard is, it's just not on the agenda yet. And we've got to get, we've got to get the fire put out before we start worrying about these lesser challenges.
And the other thing is I want to make sure that the problems that could contribute to a reason why the filters aren't working are being addressed too. Because if you're trying to fix something that's being caused by another issue, we don't know what's going to happen. So we've got to make sure that even despite there are smaller problems, they're all attributing and contributing to the same bigger issue.
The, the solids loading come into the filter when it's excessive. It just makes the filter work harder. It just makes it wash, wash itself more, sometimes continuously. But that by itself is not creating any mechanical forces on the filter that it's not experiencing otherwise.
Just addressing the issue about compliance and potential particles to get through. My only other question was for, in terms of installations, do you continue to install similar to what we have in other locations throughout the country?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it's almost the exact identical except for the replacements of redesigned parts?
We, we took what we have learned here, and we have made parts that are superior to what the original parts were. But each of the parts that we had trouble with here, we replaced or we upgraded to a higher standard. Based on that learning cycle, we've improved the new machines that go out of the shop have, at your, at your unfortunate pain and suffering, that has been what we've been able to use to improve the design to eliminate those problems for other people who are buying the machines currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Gureva. Councilwoman McClellan, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments and one question. I appreciate you being here and your attention to the detail and your explanation of quality control. My husband works in quality control, so I understand some of what you're talking about. The vendor item, I assume that you're kind of going back to them, making sure that they're doing the quality processes and all of the root cause analysis and all that kind of thing to make sure that their products that they're giving you has gone through all of that analysis and trying to find what the issue is before it comes to you? Is that?
I actually have five business entities that are involved in solving this problem with the wheel. It starts with having a wheel fail. I've sent failed wheels to ATS Analytical in Atlanta, Georgia. They run a failure analysis lab. We have electron scanning microscopy of the surface of where the tread is separated from the core. I have people doing metallurgical work to validate that the stuff has been made from the right kind of steel. We have people testing the urethane treads for the proper durometer, whether they have suffered hydrolysis chemically, which means absorbing water into the polymer matrix that the polyurethane is made from. I have engineering people who are reviewing the structural requirement for the load capacity that the wheel has to withstand. I have people who make the wheels who are running computer simulation programs to simulate the load forces between the rotating assembly that carries the filtration panels and the wheel that makes the carousel go around. And last but not least, I have a company called NUCO out of Atlanta that does a lot of trunnion wheel work for people in automated factories that are building cars and other machinery, who is helping us to examine the failure mode so that we can determine whether we're barking up the wrong tree or whether we're going down the right path. When you do failure analysis, you, you always run the risk of deciding if you're going down, you know, fork A or fork B. And currently, we've gone down both. And we think we have this narrowed down now to the failure is taking place between the adhesion of the tread and the steel core that the tread rides on. So we've made three critical design changes in the way the wheel gets made. That new wheel is on the machine at the plant that's currently running. And we're, unfortunately, we have to give it a certain number of weeks to analyze how it's performing. I have the same wheels at Dua Jack now that are also running, which takes me back to the point I made earlier, that sometimes somebody else who's got a problem isn't necessarily the worst thing for me because I have two horses in the race now to see what's going on at the two different sites.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I, I know what hard work that you're putting in to try and get it working properly. And I, I understand the frustrations that you're going through because I see it on the other side.
I know more about this than I ever wanted to.
Some of the stuff that my husband deals with in the automotive industry. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions or comments?
Yes, please, Your Honor. First of all, Mr. Lloyd, I would also like to add my thanks. And I do appreciate, appreciate the ethics that you show and your determination to follow through. And I'm glad that you understand our duty to the residents to, to follow up and make sure that, that we're doing everything possible to resolve the situation. I do have some questions. One of them was how is our case study informed future installations? I think you answered that question at a previous, for a previous council member. What would you do in our place? Would you do anything differently than what we're doing now?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If, if our positions were reversed, if we were coming to you and talking about the things that we're doing to solve the issue, and you were in our place as of having to oversee and ask questions, what would, what would you do in our place?
I don't know your background. I don't know your individual backgrounds. I don't know if you're a doctor, a lawyer, a scientist, an engineer, or, or a homemaker, or a businessperson. I can't be on your side of the aisle and not be hands-on in a problem like this because I know too much about it already. But if I was completely out of my element, if somebody said to me, we need to decide whether we're going to take somebody's organ out, all I can do is ask some intelligent questions. I'm not qualified to get in the middle of that discussion. You all have been far more patient with dealing with us than I think a lot of other people would be. And we're grateful for that. And the previous plant manager, Bob Skull, I mean, God bless him, he was, he was just magnificent in the level of cooperation we got and him giving us access to the plant whenever we needed it, was always polite. This is, this is the best that we could hope for.
So what, what do you see as the future? You said you, you envisioned coming back in the next year and thinking that, that you would be able to tell us we've got that third aspect that you were talking about, that third aspect solved. Is that, that's correct? Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I expect that, I expect that the wheels that we have on there that are being tested right now are going to prove to be, if not the final design of the wheel, it's going to be the final version of it, which leads us to making a permanent design of, of that type of wheel.
And when is that wheel coming out of R and D?
Pardon me?
When is that wheel coming to industry?
We already have the wheel on the machine now being tested. If, if we do anything more to it, it'll just be a couple of small dimensional adjustments to the final configuration of it. The, the, the basic structure of it, the way it's put together, the way it's designed will not, I don't think it'll be changing. I think we have, I think we have figured it out.
And when do you think that's coming here?
Well, the ones that are on the machine now are already being, are already in place and they're being tested. And I already.
Oh, you're saying not that they're being tested at your facility, you're saying they're here and they're being tested now.
They're here. They're running on your machine. And I have, I have enough of them in inventory at the plant, based on my optimism that this will solve the issue. I have enough of them to put on the second machine to bring it up to the same standard.
Okay.
We didn't want to change both machines until we had got some runtime and gained our confidence.
I appreciate that.
We, I mean, we know, we know what the limitation is of the previous design. We typically get about eight to 12 weeks out of it before we have a, a deep, you know, where the tread separates from the, the wheel core. And we think that this current design's going to solve that issue.
Eight to 12 weeks has been the arc? Eight to 12 weeks has been the arc of performance? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, from, from installation to failure.
And where are we now in that timeframe, in that arc?
I think we're in about week four.
Okay.
On that.
Further questions?
I, I guess I just have a question for the city manager. It's allergy season, and I am aware of that. Mr. Campbell, is city staff in agreement of Mr. Lloyd's description of the problem, those three aspects that, you know, we had a, a design issue that was solved? We had some quality control issues that was solved and that we're down to this, this final wheel testing? Is, is our city staff in agreement that, of what Mr. Lloyd describes?
I'll answer that question. So I would say yes. But first, I would guess I would say time will tell, right? I mean, as long as it is, as it continues to function the way a Mr. Lloyd believes it's going to continue to function, then I would say, yes, we agree with that. But if it does fail, similar or, or quicker than the, the past ones that have been used, then I would, then I reserve my answer to be no. So I, I mean, at least the time will tell.
Okay. Okay. And we're at week four?
Well, if I take you back just for a moment, if I might, the, the original issue that I said was an engineering problem, we corrected that shortly after the machines were started up. That issue has not reoccurred since. That issue has been put to bed. The second issue that we had was if, I don't know if you know the machine internally or not, but there's a very large part on the end of the machine that holds the assembly where the filter panels rotate. That part suffered a failure of a weld, a weld, and we replaced those parts, and that part has not failed. And our error there was a quality error because the parts needed to have been checked through metallurgical, what we call radiological inspection, which is where you X-ray the parts and you look to see what the quality of the weld is. We, we didn't have all the parts fail, but we replaced all the parts because when one of them broke, we had, we suspected that the others could have the same issue. So we had all new parts made and we replaced all four of those parts. That issue has not reoccurred. That has taken us down to this final issue, which is this buyout wheel that I get from another vendor.
I think we have a, I mean, speaking for myself, I think we have a much clearer idea of the problem that you've identified, the steps you've taken. One of my fears, we had a presentation in May, and that's some of the schematics, you know, that I, that you referred to. We had drawings of that. And I guess my fear was we were, we were going to suffer that bias of we're following down a road and we don't know when it's time to do something different. So I personally feel reassured tonight that, that, that's not the case, that we are. So I personally feel reassured tonight that that's not the case, that we are, we have two out of these three problems and a good start on the third. So I appreciate your thorough answer and your walking me through. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Lloyd, in echo, the comments made by my colleagues, you were very, you provided very detailed and precise answers. We appreciate that. We will continue to focus on this matter because it's of critical importance. You're probably aware that we discussed the wastewater treatment plant, specifically odor mitigation, but we discuss the plant as a whole at the conclusion of every council meeting. So our new wastewater treatment superintendent will continue to update us on the Nova filters and how they're working. If you have information you'd like to share with us, that you'd like disseminated to council, please work through Steve. And we look forward to seeing you in a year's time, and knock on wood, many of these issues will be resolved, and you'll be able to provide us, for lack of a better way to articulate it, a clean bill of health. Mr. Rubel, do you have some additional comments? Real quick, because we do have a pretty full agenda this evening.
I promise to be very quick. I just wanted to clarify just a couple of quick things. And I believe Mr. Lloyd used the word "design" a couple of times tonight, and I believe he's referring to the design of the machine internal to Nova.
When I speak of design, I'm speaking of our mechanical design of the components of the machine. Otherwise, I would have used the term consultant. But I want, these guys didn't do anything wrong. I mean, that's an important distinction to make here.
I did want to clarify something else. One of the councilmen asked about was a firm that was hired to do a plan for the wastewater plant. Tetra Tech has never been hired to do a master plan for the wastewater plant. That's very important that that is made. The RBCs are older technology, and it's also important to note that in 2014, when we were identifying the projects to be done, there were alternatives made, including replacing the RBCs. And it was about $2.5 million more to replace the RBCs. We had a public hearing about it, and we all voted on how to proceed. So that's very important that that is correct, that that was analyzed, and we had a public hearing, and we proceeded in that manner.
Very good. For the record, thank you, Mr. Rubel. Our wastewater treatment superintendent, anything else you'd like to add at this time? Steve?
At this time, I'll begin again.
Very good. Mr. Lloyd, unless you have anything additional that you'd like to share, again, we appreciate your time, and safe travels back. Does my memory serve me correct that you traveled from Louisiana to be with us?
This trip, I came up from Atlanta, and tomorrow I'm on my way to Canada to visit some of the other installations we have there that are actually working correctly, and I need that reassurance.
Safe travels. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for the hospitality. Again, I just want you to know that we appreciate the patience and the ability to work through this with you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Next up, we have an update from Damian Ferrell regarding the Faradine development along Monroe Street. Mr. Ferrell, we welcome you here this evening. I understand you have a PowerPoint. As you get set up, I'll just provide a little bit of background and context for my council colleagues. So Mr. Ferrell will be making his initial presentation this evening. As I mentioned in my State of the City address, he has a rezoning request, which is an action item on Wednesday's Planning Commission agenda. And then my goal is that this item and approving his redesign would be an action item at one of our subsequent meetings, ideally our next meeting, which is on July the 16th. So, Mr. Ferrell, I would ask, because we do have a pretty full agenda this evening, sir, if you could be as succinct as possible, and then we'll open it up for questions from the day. Does that sound good?
Sounds good, Your Honor.
Damian, the floor is yours whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, council members, city manager. Appreciate us could be back again, but I do need that on.
Mr. Shaw, we got just a blank screen. Any assistance that you could offer?
Let me take a look here. We could try the other connection here. I didn't seem to clarify. I guess that's not really the case. I don't know. There's something. 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 I will move through this quickly and then take questions. The scheme we're proposing is a 44-unit condo project, two-story, rowhouse-style project. And the rezoning that Mayor Mal is talking about is this little piece right here. We have a purchase agreement with New Tabernacle Life Church for this .2-acre piece over here, and if that is successful, we'll close on the property. And the point of, main point of getting this piece was, as you know, this is a really awkward piece. It's been a tough piece to work with, but is to relocate the barn, which is currently there, to that location and use it as a community building, which has always been an intent of the project. But then to split up our retention area, use the balance of that parcel for retention, gives us an opportunity to make more of a focus of the barn and bring it more to the center of the project as well, and then split retention between these two areas. So the actual, the road design has, other than this T, this portion of it, is exactly the same as the original design. So in explanation, the front half of each of these blocks are garages. We are providing each unit with one garage. They're deep garages, so they're 27 feet deep, which means you could get two small tandem cars. But otherwise, you get a parking, you get an indoor garage and a spot out in front of your garage, or it gives the owner additional storage. So, and then behind those garages, on the ground floor of all of these inner units are one-bedroom units. The five end units, this one, that one, that one, that one, and that one, all switch from a one-bedroom to a two-bedroom, fully accessible, universal design unit by the addition of what we affectionately call the saddlebag on the ends of these. This one doesn't have it because it's up against the setback. And then upstairs are, so we have 17 one-bedroom, five two-bedroom ground floor units, and nine, sorry, 17 five, and 22 two-bedroom walk-up units. So this is kind of the basis of the design, if you will. Four garages at the street level that are pushed back with balconies and very large windows to give that kind of eyes on the street, give activity as well. And so behind these two garages is a one-bedroom unit, the same over here, and then four units are served by these recessed entry courtyards. So what you're seeing up here are two bedrooms of the two-bedroom, the second-floor unit. And then the end condition is a look like this, where the saddlebag is added on, and we get this two-story, all-ground-level unit. Just a brief look then at the landscape plan. How this is structured is that the street will rise very gently, about six feet from here to here. As you know, so the barn is currently, the barn is located right about there right now. This corner is at the very same location as the original corner of the design of the first unit, if you remember, the three-building unit. And then very quickly, I will take you through a quick fly through the model. So we like the idea of pulling the barn forward, making it very much a focus with the deck off the second level, and then creating the streetscape with the large windows on the upper floor, and then four units sharing an entry courtyard. So you get this nice push and pull along the facade and recesses, and not just a wall, but a small domestic scale to each building. And I will stop there and take any questions.
Very good, Mr. Ferrell. Thank you very much. And just to clarify, your rezoning request is on the Planning Commission agenda for this Wednesday, the 11th. This will be an action item for city council to sign off on the conceptual plan, likely at our next council meeting, per the conditions of the purchase agreement, because this was city-owned property. And I just want to clarify for the audience's benefit and those who may be watching at home, this will still need to go through the normal planning and zoning process, receive preliminary, and then final site plan approval from the Planning Commission. I started at this end, and by the way, that last, I don't even know what you call that. I'm not technology. Yeah, the, sort of the aerial view of the development. I thought that was very nicely done.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I started with Mr. Seal last time. I'd start with Ms. Mitchell, and we'll work our way down. Councilwoman Mitchell, questions?
Thank you, sir, for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
I'd be interested in having the PowerPoint to look at. I don't know if that's possible to send to our city clerk, but not being a natural builder, it takes me a little while to take in detail.
Sure, I can get.
I'd appreciate that.
I'll be there tomorrow, yes.
Could you please remind me what number of homes was on the original proposal when you bought the property?
We had 30 units in the original scheme.
Okay.
They were considerably larger than these units, so we've gone to 44 smaller units. And we only, what the market analysis kind of showed up was that one-bedroom, there seemed to be a lot of interest in a one-bedroom unit. And so that's, was part of the driver for this solution, was to look for something where we could meet that, or at least address that market.
And do you have an idea yet what market this would, what price point this would enter the market? Do you have estimates at this point?
I mean, we're still working through details of that, but
Just in general.
Reinhardt's advice right now and their guidance is the one-bedrooms would be in the low 200s, and then the two-bedrooms, depending on the size and the location, from the low 300s to mid 300s.
Okay. I think that satisfies my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, as well as how many were before versus now, and they're condos, correct?
Correct.
And then, is there a current house? Or is that?
We've had it demolished. It's gone.
No, not the one, yeah, not that one, but there's a current duplex that's south of the church?
Yeah.
Is that on the other side of that green space?
Can't really get it. Can you see it there? Sorry. Right there.
Oh, that's the house. Okay, so that's not the church, that's the house.
No, the church is actually right here.
Okay, okay. That's what I was getting confused.
That's the house on the road.
Yeah, 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 that's what I was wondering.
The church, right there, there's about 12 foot of common boundary with the church property and this little piece. And that's why we approached them, because it had sort of been cut off, and it's really landlocked, as you can see.
Right. But then there's another house that's, I guess, would be
Well, there's a back, I mean, a
It's like an apartment or?
An accessory building back here, and that house is much closer to the street.
Okay.
Obviously, and so I'm sorry, the survey didn't pick up. The church is about there.
Okay.
And this house is, most of these houses are
There's a house there, and then that little house is an apartment, or there's
No, I think it's just an accessory building.
I think there's someone living there.
Storage. Oh, really? Okay. All right. All right. I haven't gone knocking.
I was just confused if that was the church or not, so that explains that.
To my understanding, these are all, what is shown here are basically accessory buildings on this survey. The houses are up closer to the street.
And then height-wise, to the neighboring properties, I know we discussed some of that in the initial planning process or when you came before us previously. These buildings will be just two stories?
Yes.
Okay. Because did we discuss three stories at one point? I can't remember.
We did.
Okay.
Well, it was, it was, what was visible was two and a half
Okay.
Before.
And now it's just two.
Now it's just two.
Okay. Okay, I think that was it for me. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Mr. Gierbach?
Yeah, have any of these drawings been presented to our city superintendent
Yes.
or any of our planning?
Yes.
So he's reviewed where that one house she mentioned sits right on a, I would say, on the edge of a detention pond, if that's what you're saying that property is?
So in the, you know, when we had it surveyed as part of this assembling the purchase agreement, obviously, a new legal description has been drafted for that piece on its own, and then a new legal description has been drafted incorporating it into our piece and as part of the requirements of rezoning, right? So if you look at the details of that survey, it skirts around this building about five, three to five feet, I forget the actual dimension. But, yeah, that building is, on the original property line owned by the church, it wasn't crouching. So our description creates a little setback around that building.
Because that is one concern. I think that some of those will be an issue with that property, but I'll wait to let it
Yeah, and please also consider that my lines here are relatively schematic. I mean, the engineering has been done for, and you can see what's in, it is actually a wedge of land. If I could zoom in close, I can't unfortunately, but there's enough freeboard left behind that building to both get landscaping in there. It starts out at about four feet here and it deepens to about six feet in this corner, and then flows through to this retention area and down to its lowest point, and then out to the street.
I have other questions, but that'll probably happen more during planning. The only one I do have a concern with is because this project has failed once before, and now we're actually increasing the density to make this significantly more denser than what it was intended. How do you present to us the confidence in that you'll have the funding and everything else aligned in place, and the builders and everything else, that we as a city should commit to it again? Although I, at this point, have not been convinced because it took forever to have the house torn down. The lot is still, has weeds that are three or four feet tall. It hasn't been smoothed out, so as you can understand, we have doubts, but I need to understand how you will present to us the confidence that we should continue this project.
I think your use of the word "fail" is a little harsh, if I may. We lost our manufacturer. You know, the intention of this project, and it still is, is for off-site fabrication, and that's something which we are sticking to for a whole host of reasons. We had little control of that, unfortunately. In losing our manufacturer, that was at a time when building costs started to rise dramatically, as have labor costs. And that pushed the project into a situation where the original design, using elevators, parking below the building, just became, it was no longer feasible. So we had to look at a different design, and that is what has driven this design. So we have about 60% of our equity financing in place, and we have a term sheet from one of the local banks, the previous bank who had given us a term sheet. So when the rest of our equity funding is raised, which I'm quite confident about, we've gone through the first half of it quite easily, or raised the first half quite easily, we'll be moving forward.
And I think that'll be additional questions I think the rest of the council will have going forward.
As far as the weeds on the mound, ANH Landscaping are under contract to mow the property as it is. And so I have called him, I called him on Friday and asked him if he would get it onto the schedule for one of the guys to get out there and whack that down and include it as part of the ongoing maintenance.
Appreciate it.
And they will also be doing, they're under contract to actually do the landscaping installation as well. So all our bids are in, our contracts are lit. We have the confidence in that our engineering is done. If we don't get the rezoning, we'll have to change the site plan, obviously, but we are ready to move forward. You can see the level of detail, so our drawings through Midwest and Consulting are complete and ready to submit after the rezoning process, if that's successful.
Thank you.
Mayor Protamtar, thank you, Mr. Gierbach.
Yes, thank you. First, could you tell me again, how many one-bedrooms and how many two-bedrooms?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. And 27?
And then, and then five
Oh.
ground floor, first floor, two-bedroom, and 22 walk-up, two-bedroom.
Okay. Okay, great. So in the previous plans, and in your extensive discussions with the neighbors, especially on Markana Court, the previous plans included, I believe, an easement or
Right.
arrangement for them still to have walking access to the park. Is that, that's still there?
It's not on this, I just picked the landscape
Right.
plan, but if you look at the site plan approval, the whole package, there was a 10-foot easement all the way along this eastern property line.
Okay. So you're retaining all of the
Absolutely.
Okay, so you're retaining all of the, all of the concessions, or all of the arrangements you made to working with the neighbors?
And I've had discussions with Laura Gerbeck on Markhanna Court.
Okay, that's-
And circulated drawings to them for their review, and so on.
Okay, great, thank you. My other questions have been answered already. Thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. This property started in 2014, is that when, I think? It's been about four years that this has been kicking around?
I closed on the property in January of 2016.
In '16, okay. When we first started discussing this, we were in the teens on housing. It was fourteen, seventeen, was what the initial, way back in the day, those were going to be the specialty project housing. And it seems like it keeps creeping up, and it's not just creeping, it's taking significant jumps. And I know at one point, our planners had expressed some interest, some, excuse me, some concern about the density, and that it wasn't relative to the neighborhood. And I don't know, and this is something that can be addressed, I suppose, at planning, with this number taking another significant jump, how this project is going to fit into that area?
Well, the density meets the Celine requirements, so we're not asking for any variances on density. Yes, it has increased, and what has driven that has been market. If you consider what has gone on in the market since 2016, it's fairly dramatic.
I guess my concern would be that in 2016, what we sold the property at was an X amount of houses were going to be built on that. And by, every time we're increasing it, you know, maybe Mr. Peters would have, Peter's building would have had a different offer had they known they could have put forty homes on it at some point. I just don't know whether we're being fair to the process in constantly changing the rules for it. My other issue is, it would be very helpful in the future, and if we could see an overlay of what the new proposed project is, off of what the last proposed project would be, does this still fit, you've mentioned that the roadway is the same, how do these homes still fit within the property as they were before? Are they same-
The first building sat approximately, this retention area hasn't changed. The first building sat right here. The second building sat right here, was actually closer to that northern property line. We've got substantially more room along that area now. And the third building sat right here. In this area, there was an open space over here.
Right.
And that's what I tried to recreate with this design over there. And then leaving, in both instances, we were leaving these eastern parcels, or what used to be four, five parcels, alone.
So the pocket park is gone?
Pocket park, well, we have a green space, which is retention, but, and the plan is that both retention areas are going to be planted up with meadow mix, so that it has a more natural appeal, and a more natural look.
Okay. But it's not usable space, it's just greenery, correct?
Right, there is, there is, this area around here is certainly usable.
Okay.
But, of course, we border on a park to the south.
Will this be a private street, or a city street?
It's a private street at the moment.
It'll be a private street.
Am I right, Gary?
So as far then as parking, well, you have, you will not have on-street parking?
No. So each unit has parking on its apron, and there are some guest parking there, and there are a few spots along here.
Okay, so you have about ten parking spaces for forty-four units?
Each unit has a garage and a parking space on its apron, so each, each unit has two spaces within its condominium footprint, and then these are additional guest spaces over here, these two collections here.
The barn, does it have any, like, historical value of any sort? Is it just a piece of, it's just a building on the property, correct?
Correct. Sorry about that. Correct, there's no official historical value. I mean, it's up to, or things are as historical value to it, but yes, it's, it's, it's a, there's no, it's not part of a historical district.
Okay. I'm just saying that if you try to move it, and the structure doesn't move well.
Well, we've, the people are going to do it, that's what they do for a living. It's a group out of Mylan, and I don't remember their name right now, but we have an agreement with them. It's, they've been doing it for many years, it's a family business. The building has no hand-hewn lumber in it, so there's no, it's all sawmill dimensional lumber. I just, I'm, I'm very partial to barns, actually. We've, over the years, have converted fourteen historic antique barns into homes, all over the country. I'm just, I like them, I like the volume, I like the shape. This one, it's just, it's pleasing, it's there, it's in great shape, other than some of the siding, and I think it would make a great community building.
Thank you. My last question is for Mr. Campbell. Where does this project now fall within our master plan? As far as housing stock, housing, you know, cost, and style?
Well, it's, it's infill. It's similar to the other ones that are, are in the various stages of moving forward, whether it's, the one on, on East Henry, the one on, across the street, right, Curtis Bluffs, the ones on Maple Street, or Maple Road, those are all very similar, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
These are condos, right, Mr. Farrell?
Correct.
I'm not, you went through, in your attempt at brevity, you went through some of the drawings there very quickly. There's a saddle piece between each of the buildings, is that correct?
No, it's only on the five, on five of the end units there.
Well, no, maybe I misspoke. Not saddle, but is there a connector? See where those white-
Yes. So these are actually the stair towers, those whites, those white rectangles.
Those are square, or stair towers?
Those are stair towers, they're back up to each other, and they create an entry courtyard on the drive side, and on the back side, they create a light opportunity. So there's a fourteen-foot space between the buildings, so we get light into those units from all three sides.
Okay, so, all right. One of the very attractive features of your first presentation, I thought, was the amount of glass and window space. I don't see that much now, especially for the ground floor units.
Well, if you take this as an example, these are the bedrooms upstairs. We're using modules like this. These are eight-foot-high windows, and, and I'm sorry, I don't have that elevation, I was trying to be quick and brief, but the back, the rear of each of these buildings has more than this. In fact, the entire width of each unit is almost completely glass on the back side. Those are the living rooms on the back side.
Upper and lower?
A bedroom and a living room, but they both have almost wall-to-wall, and eight-foot-high on the, for the one-bedroom units, you've got a bedroom and a living room facing back, and then upstairs, it's all living room, it's all open living room, dining room.
Are those windows in the garage doors there?
Yes, those are.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Well, Mr. Farrell, thank you again for being here. Let me make a few comments and observations. First, with, with great respect to my colleagues, excuse me, the issue of density really does not have a whole lot of merit here, because again, to the point that you made tonight, and you and I discussed this over coffee, it complies with the standard. So I have to say, and I think I shared this with you in the past, I actually like this proposal better than the last one, aesthetically, and in terms of design and layout. And one of the things that made me gravitate towards your proposal in the first place was that you were offering a product that was different and unique than what currently exists in our housing stock, which has great appeal. You know, I'm very supportive, the goal is to get this site developed, and on the tax rolls, to see, you know, additional housing created for, for our residents and people who want to move to the area. So I look forward to going through the normal planning and zoning process, and having robust discussions with my Planning Commission colleagues and other community stakeholders, but I feel very confident about this. I think the meeting that you and I had at Kerrigan's was, was very upbeat and positive, and I look forward to moving the ball forward on this, because that's, that's obviously in the best interest of, of the city, but ultimately you, as well as the developer. So, again, for my colleagues' benefit, Mr. Farrell, what I'd like to do is have this be an action item subsequent to Planning Commission's discussion and hopeful action on Wednesday. So you will email this presentation to our city clerk, and then she will disseminate it electronically. But in the interim, if people have additional questions or concerns, or information they would like from Mr. Farrell, please direct that to the city manager, and we will get you whatever you require. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Very good. Thank you. One last question.
Just one additional question. Is this a phase project, or will you plan on building them all out at one time?
We would like to build them all out at one time, and that's really depends on pre-sales.
Okay.
So what the, the plan is, is to put all the infrastructure, and obviously, and the roads, and the majority of the landscaping, to build the first, to build, to bring in these two buildings, which would give us four models, and then based on, so the debt financing part of it, as is happening very frequently these days from banks, is dependent on the number of pre-sales. So the last term sheet we had was five pre-sales, right now we have five, we have three purchase agreements, not just reservations. So I'm feeling pretty confident about that, that we get that we'll continue and finish up this building, move to this one, and then end with that one.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, we move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. There are any citizen comments on agenda items. Please.
Logan, BT Cecil, Huntington Woods Homer Association, Phase One, 3D9 Arlington Drive. I have a quick statement to read for today regarding the Phase Three development in Huntington Woods, and some of the continuing issues that we've had as Phase One residents. Thank you for the opportunity to address it tonight regarding the Phase Three development in Huntington Woods subdivision. I would like to thank the city's efforts on expediting the spring repair to Monroe Street at the Monroe Street Bridge, and just tonight before the meeting, tangible progress being made in the advancement of the commencement of the building of the Monroe Street sidewalk, finally connecting Huntington Woods to the Greater Celine City proper. While substantial progress has been made since the beginning of the engagement with Mayor Marl and Chief Hart, along with other city officials, I continue to have concerns, expressing on behalf of our residents, regarding the progression toward a rapid approval of Phase Three plans for the Huntington Woods subdivision. As Phase Two construction activity has demonstrated a continued lack of good neighbor behavior by the managing construction team, and additional confusion has entered residents' minds regarding the nature of the Phase Three development. I'll summarize our concerns in three points. The first, traffic issues. Speeding issues, a major point of emphasis since our first engagement, have only recently trended downward since the installation of a speed monitoring device in Arlington Drive, but they do continue to happen regularly, and are being documented, when witnessed, to a combined email list of Celine officials and Pulte officials, including Mr. Score. Recently, construction crews themselves are now starting to cut across non-designated construction streets, such as Newcastle Street, to expedite entering and exiting their, leaving their job sites, instead of the marked construction entrances, which are supposed to be on Arlington Drive through the construction area. Second, private property destruction. Upkeep crews at the Phase Two development have destroyed multiple landscape plants inside the private property of Phase One residents at 814 to 822 Newcastle Street. A temporary mailbox structure was built without notification with half the structure on a Phase One owner's property, this is at 806 Newcastle Street. Both of these issues have not, to this point, been mitigated or addressed by the Phase Two developers. Point three, quality of life. Work crews are continuing to work well into evening hours, prompting our advocacy for Celine's first noise and construction hours ordinance, which I believe is on the agenda for tonight. Additionally, discussions between Phase One residents and Pulte representatives at the model home recently, this past week, have brought to light some confusion as to whether Phase Three will be only single-family homes in line with the rest of the neighborhood, or whether the plan has changed to include some condominium homes in Phase Three. Exact clarification on that point before approval would be helpful and reassuring to our Phase One residents. Finally, there is continuing concern regarding the reforestation plan and adding an additional tree removal during and after Phase Three activities. While we are sure the builder's paperwork is in order, these multiple slides ranging from inconveniences to private property violations, to public safety issues, have us concerned as to what other corners may be being cut in the process of Phase Two to Phase Three development. May I continue? I have three sentences left. Thank you. As I'm sure Phase Three will pass another milestone tonight, I am hopeful that City Council will at least provide rigorous follow-through and inspection of onsite activities throughout the approval and construction process. Phase One residents have already endured significant hardship during Phase Two construction with little to no remediation from Pulte until prodded by city officials. We hope Phase Three's progression will show a maturation on the side of the developer with respect to existing homeowners' property and safety. I'm happy to continue this discussion at the council's convenience if necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, BT. Appreciate your comments. We'll make sure a number of those are addressed during action items eighteen dash one twenty-nine and eighteen dash one thirty-one. There are additional comments on agenda items.
Mary Hess, it's amazing, if you notice where they have development, that the streets go to pot. And I guess I'm wondering why the developer, on Maple, there's a couple develop, and the roads are a mess, and up where the old school used to be. And I'm wondering, when planning addresses some of these developments, if in fact, the, I'm sure the load limit is kind of bad, but whether that could be addressed as far as the street, and if it's damaged, that it will be, that portion would be replaced. Also, I talked as far as to the gentleman on the disposal, and we were talking about solid effluent. I asked him as far as the sludge, because household effluent, of course, is much less strong than septic tank waste. And he said that that really wasn't his department, and I asked the other gentleman, I think Rubel, and he said that would have to be a study, that he wouldn't know if it was stronger or not. The other comment is on Fair Dean. It definitely has gotten, I'm, some people think it's attractive, I think it looks like boxcars, but that's my opinion. And it appears that the parking places will be great for the new parking lot that the city built next door. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. So there are additional citizen comments on agenda items. No, we appreciate the remarks. We will proceed then to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any council member or citizen, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Tar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move to public, or public hearing. Item eighteen dash one twenty-four, this is special land use to allow commercial recreation business yoga-centric along North Ann Arbor Street. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing, affording anyone from the public an opportunity to speak to this issue. Moved by Gierba to open the public hearing, and that was seconded by Councilmember Seal, is that correct? And that was at eight fifty-eight PM. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this issue? Please come forward to the podium.
Move to close.
It's been moved by Gierba to close the public hearing at eight fifty-eight PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. We move to the third motion. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 2nd, 2018 memo from the Celine Planning Commission to approve or not to approve special land use from section four point zero four fourteen B point three of the Celine City zoning ordinance to allow yoga exercise business at 401 North Ann Arbor Street.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Mr. Seal, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Mr. Gary Rubel, any comment this evening?
The owner of the business, Kimberly Shipper, emailed me, she was sorry she could not make the meeting, she had to go to North Carolina where her father was being put in hospice, so she, she was called out. This is a situation where the owners are coming in to conform with the zoning code to obtain a special land use, and as- to obtain a special land use, and as that was fulfilled at the Planning Commission.
Questions for Mr. Rubel? Discussion on the motion, oh, I'm sorry. Question, Ms. Tahr?
Yes, thank you.
Please.
So, I, the business, I understand is doing very well, and I think it's a great addition at that location. I just have, it's a more procedural question. It's been open since January, so is this sort of normal procedurally that we would, after this period of time, we'd be doing the special land use approval, or what happened?
Well, not everybody's aware of the process of when they move. Now, she was in another location, which was, would have been a special land use also. And then when she changed units, we were unaware of it. Mr. Gearbo actually found it and caught it. So, she came into compliance. It took several months because of her, she has an agent working through the owner. The Zons own the property, Zon Estate. So, they had to do a little communication, and then finally, the, the property manager for the Zons was able to get the process going with the owner, and so it became a reality.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Yes, in layman's terms, you'd do it before.
That was what I thought.
In an ideal world, but, you know, certainly better late than never. Additional discussion. Mr. Rubel, thank you for your report on that. We appreciate it. It's been properly moved, I believe, by CEO, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Before we move on to new business, I want to make you aware of a few things that I failed to mention at the beginning of tonight's meeting. You do have a hard copy of Celine City Council Accounts Payable. You do have a festival assistance agreement, which will be referenced momentarily. You also have, maybe the clerk can explain this. There's a typo on a resolution relating to agenda item 18-134. And then up next is this petition from a Boy Scout and Eagle Scout, and this is a schematic rendering of, of his project. So, it'll be referenced momentarily. I apologize that I failed to acknowledge those documents at, at the beginning of tonight's meeting. Bear with me because we do have quite a bit of business to take care of this evening. We move on to new business. Item 18, oh, excuse me. Item 18-137, Eagle Scout Project. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the Eagle Scout project of constructing a pasture fence at Rensselaer Farm property as submitted by Anders Jacobson.
Move to approve.
Moved by Tahar to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Mr. Fordish, do you want to make a brief comment, and then perhaps we can hear from our applicant?
Yep, very briefly. Mr. Peters and Mr. Jacobson, the Eagle Scout applicant, are here to discuss the project. I looked at it real quick, just because I manage the farm maintenance and have no objections to the project.
Very good. Before we hear from the applicant, Mr. Peters, as president of the Celine Historic Society, would you care to make any comment at this time?
Just real quick to say that the Historic Society appreciates all the Eagle Scout projects they contribute to the farm over the years. I'm sure Mr. Jacobson will do a fine job. This will be a very worthwhile project.
Very good. Mr. Jacobson, we're delighted to have you here. Would you like to speak maybe briefly to your, your project, and then we'll open it up for questions?
Yeah, so, I was brought in to address the issue of there was some trees being, that they wanted to turn into orchard, being eaten by the sheep. So, I'm designing, I designed a fence to surround all of the trees, creating a orchard. Materials I would be using would be sixteen sections of feet, of sheep and goat panel, treated wooded fence posts, entry wood fence posts. A gate on the request of the Celine Historical Society has been added on the north side of the enclosure, large enough for tractor access. The estimated cost of this project would be about $940. I would be fundraising by collecting cans and donations. Before I start building, I will be contacting Mistig and making sure all the permits are appropriately obtained.
Excellent. I think this is a wonderful project. It will be a great addition to the Rensselaer Farm property. And appreciate those remarks, and glad that you brought your dad with you as well this evening. Are there questions for either Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Peters, or DPW Director Fordish? Any discussion then on the motion? Well, that was easy enough. Thank you so much. Mr. Gearbotta, please.
I'll be abstaining because of being treasurer on the Historical Society.
Very good. Abstention is noted from the motion. If there's nothing further, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Tahar, seconded by McClellan, to approve the Eagle Scout project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And one abstention and one absence, the eyes have it and the motion carries. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Look forward to, to your project being completed. We move on now to new business item 18-139, Celtic Festival Truck Rental Agreement. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the truck rental agreement for the Celtic Festival as presented.
Moved.
As approved, Mr. Gearbotta?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. I would invite Terry Murphy, who's the treasurer of the, treasurer of both the Friends and the Celtic Festival Executive Committee. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
If you want to speak to, so Terry, for council's benefit and the audience's benefit, I did send an email out earlier today indicating that, one, adding something at the 11th hour to a council agenda is not our standard protocol.
I appreciate it.
Yep, but there are situations and occasions where it's, it's warranted, and the issue that precipitated the inclusion of this agenda item came about through no fault of our own, our own being the city or the Celtic Festival Executive Committee. It was a mishap by a vendor and a failure to communicate with you in a timely manner.
Yes, yes. I, I reserved the refrigerator truck on May 29th. I called the local vendor to confirm and to discuss how you use a generator and how that would be billed. And this past Friday, when I called to confirm pickup, they told me I couldn't rent a truck because I wasn't a organization with a DUNES number and an established line of credit, and that individuals can't rent refrigerator trucks. So, I just didn't know what I didn't know. I know now.
And because of the issue with the line of credit, we couldn't rent the truck via the Friends of the Festival.
Yes, we're a cash and care, we're a cash and carry.
You know, I offered them my credit cards. I offered them everything. It's, it's a people thing, so, yes.
Very good. Perhaps for the public's record and for council's benefit, can you clarify why it's so essential that we have?
It is essential that we have a refrigerator truck to hold 100 kegs of beer and 150 cases of craft beer bottles, because we've expanded our beer offerings on Saturday afternoon. We're a legitimate Michigan craft beer festival now. As you are well aware, beer is where we make our money. And so, we got more beer, more money. We're really hoping, we're getting good.
Keep it cold.
And we have to keep it cold. So, we're, at this point, Ryder is, has told me that they're, they're trying really hard to get us a truck. So, that's where we're at right now.
Perhaps that provides council with some background that is beneficial in making a policy decision. Other questions for Terry? Councilwoman Dillon?
What have you done in the past?
We've never ordered this much beer in the past.
So, how did you keep it cold in the past?
We've never had this much beer. We've had a smaller, it's called a tap rig, which is beer taps on one side of the truck and storage at the backside. That storage is not enough for what we have coming in.
And so, now, with this agreement, will there be a truck available for you?
Ryder keeps telling me they're trying, so.
Thank you.
Prayers, anything you got? I'm being very, very nice to them today, and I will continue to be nice to them for the next couple of days, but it's prayers.
Well, as you and I have discussed, it's not the ideal way to conduct business.
It is not the ideal way to conduct business.
Say that as lightly and politely as possible.
Yes.
Additional questions for either Ms. Murphy or myself? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, that's been properly moved by Gearbotta, seconded by McClellan, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your time.
Can I have one second?
Absolutely.
We got some really exciting news about, a few hours ago. The television show Under the Radar is filming the Celtic Festival this year. So, we're, we're real excited about that. My understanding is, is somehow Councilwoman Dillon had something to do with this. I'm not, but it's, it's, we're really excited. So, they're going to be there Friday, and we'll see. I think it's a great way to promote the city.
Indeed. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your work and look forward to seeing you Friday and Saturday. Very good.
We have the car all week.
Thanks, Terry. We move on now to new business item 18-125. This is block party request. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the block party request from Mr. and Mrs. Coy to approve or not to approve a block party request allowing for, allowing a tent from one A rental, excuse me, on one side of Colony Drive from Friday, July 13th to Sunday, July 15th.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Clerk Royal, do you want to provide a little bit of background on this? I know that I received a call from Molly Lumpert Coy, and I believe she is out of town and sends her regrets, apologizes that she was unable to make it, but I believe she did provide you with some background that might be helpful to the council.
Well, back in August of 2017, council approved the changes to the block party application, allowing the city manager to approve these requests, but with this tent request, it is being placed on the city street. This would bring it to city council. I have received information back from both the police chief, fire chief, and DPW superintendent saying that they are okay with this tent being on this road, or a portion of the road through these days. And the reason that it's being there from Friday to Sunday is A1 tent rental actually sets it up and takes it down, so they're not able to just tear it down themselves. So, we're just asking for it to be allowed, and the people who are on the street are going to be at this block party, so they don't, they signed off on the, the agreement. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the city clerk? Mr. Gearbotta?
Just quickly, the tent, it's no stakes, correct?
No, it's weighted.
Just all weighted? Good, thanks.
Ms. Dillon?
Didn't we go through this last year with having a tent on the street, and we had decided that it was not going to be allowed?
They were staking it. They were, they wanted to put stakes into the ground, and then they moved it to the, the grassy area.
Okay, but I thought it was just the right of way of blocking the roadway was the issue, that we weren't. I just want to make sure that we're being consistent in what we're doing, because I thought that was the issue last year, and it was, it was also at Northview.
I think the other item is, is that that was an open road, whereas this is a dead-end street.
Okay.
So, there's no through traffic. I mean, it's only going to affect the three houses at the end of this road, where they went from two years ago, and I do know what you're talking about. It was actually a through street, and it would affect the, the whole neighborhood.
Okay. But, so if there were still to be some sort of an emergency, we would still be blocking the street?
And that's, but they're only blocking a half of it, and that's why I checked with the police chief, fire chief, and DPW to make sure that the emergency vehicles can get through there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions, Mr. Gearbotta?
Just one, clerk. Are they blocking any driveways with that tent?
No, not from, not from the, what the picture.
Okay, so any emergency vehicle can get to a house, that's what.
To a house, yes.
I just want to cover ourselves, just in case something happens. Thanks.
Any discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by, excuse me, it's been moved by Mitchell, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-126, Community Event Application Change Summer Music Series. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 22nd, 2018 memo from Jill Dernan, and to approve or not to approve the event application amendment to allow for tents on North and South Ann Arbor Streets during the Thursday night summer music series.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbotta. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. I know that, or I noticed Ms. Dernan in the audience this evening, as well as our Main Street Managing Director. Ladies, do you care to make any comment?
No specific comments, just here to field any questions from the city council.
Very good. We appreciate your patience this evening. Are there any questions for the Managing Director of Main Street or the Board Chair, Councilwoman Dillon, and then Mayor Protem Tahar?
So, with your four vendor tents, it does say that you're offering them to downtown businesses. If one of the tents were to not be utilized by a downtown business, would it be opened up? Would it not be available to outside of the downtown businesses?
The, this is the first time we've had the request from a downtown business, so our, the board approved that it would be only downtown businesses that were invited to use the tent, and if we don't use all four tents, we don't use all four tents. It won't be expanded outside the district. It could, that could change in the future, but this is the first time we've added it, so we wanted to kind of keep it.
And these tents are just for walk-up service?
Correct.
There's no seating within them?
Correct. There'd be just like a ten-by-ten pop-up tent, like they use at Summer Fest or Oktoberfest.
Thank you.
Ms. Tahar?
That was my question. Thank you.
Additional questions from the dais? Discussion on the motion. Ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. It's been properly moved by Gearbotta, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-127, Agenda Management Software. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 21st, 2018 memo from City Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve the Agenda Management Software contract with Nova Solutions at a not-to-exceed amount of $5,650.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Are you comfortable seconding that, Mr. CEO?
Yes.
Very good. It's been properly moved and seconded. Clerk Royal, do you care to make a statement?
This was just something that was budgeted during the budget process for the Clerk's Department, and this is going to hopefully make packets, council packets, much easier for not only council, but also for city staff to do it electronically. So, as we move into it, we will go, we will keep you informed, but this will do all the page numbers and show that it'll be very easy to be on the computer and find everything that you're looking for.
Very good. Questions for the city clerk? Start with Mayor Protem Tahar, and then move to Councilwoman Dillon.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm, I'm interested in the ease of access to the agenda you, you described for council members. Will that same ease of access to the agenda and supporting documents be in a public view as well?
Yes, it's, and it, it's also for your computer or an iPhone or Android. It, it matches whatever device you're using.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
So, there's a recurring yearly fee, correct?
Correct.
For this? And was this software reviewed by the IT department? Did they feel as though this was the best system?
Yes, yes.
For us, okay. Thank you.
And this is part of Granicus, which is a much larger company, but this is the best, they, they acquired this, but it was a best price for us, and it does what we need it to do.
Ms. Gierba, please.
Just a couple of questions. So this will replace what we're currently using on the, on our website, correct?
This will not, or is it part of it? This is additional. You're looking at minutes on demand for our minutes. This was actually just for agenda management.
Okay, so they will still have the PDS and everything available and minutes on demand that's searchable now? And in terms of video capabilities, will we be putting this on our website, and then the video will be associated with this, so people can access it that way?
We're not quite there yet. You can have it to where you can click on the agenda item and then see the video that goes with the agenda item, but it's very expensive.
So it's more of a, it's an add-on? It's not with the part, with the?
Right, it, it is an upgrade that you can add on, but I, at this point in our budget, I didn't think that was necessary.
No, I was reading it, didn't know if it was part of this or not, because I know that's one of the things, even though we have Vimeo.
Right.
It's difficult to, you know, get to where you want to see in those agendas, so any kind of improvement, but it's not worth the cost at this point in time. I really have just this. Thanks.
Additional questions for the city clerk? Any discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item eighteen dash one twenty-eight. This is twenty-eighteen Celine Leadership Training Agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Celine, of the Leadership Training Agreement, and to approve or not to approve a one-year agreement between the City of Celine and the Coalition for Quality Community, CQC, in amount of one thousand dollars.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll give that one to Tahar. It's been properly moved and seconded. I'll start with the city clerk. Anything you'd like to articulate to the public record?
This is just a yearly request that we've done in the past, and they brought it forward again this year, so.
Very good. We do have Diane in the back, I believe, representing Celine Leadership this evening. Thank you for being here, and more importantly, thank you for your years of dedicated service to Celine Leadership. And I'm sure if there are questions, she can perhaps address them as well. Are there questions for either the city clerk or for our guest? Let's start with Mr. CEO, and then go to Councilwoman Dillon.
Does this necessarily count as tuition for a city employee, or no?
No, no, it does not.
It's just a contribution.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
That was my, one of my questions was, it, does this scholarship, or is this just general fund-type money?
General fund.
Okay. Are there other entities that also supply funding outside of the city?
Community Ed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then we do get some donations for the scholarship fund. We established the Leslie Niedhammer Scholarship, so we do get private donations to the scholarship fund.
Additional questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, continue, Ms. Dillon.
I'm sorry, I just had one other question, sorry. I guess I'm just still confused as to why this still runs through the CQC and not through Community Ed. Why, I guess, I, I'm just, I, I've not quite figured out why there needs to be that extra step.
You know, I would have to get back with you on that. I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Back to Mr. CEO.
Yes, I just want to say, as an attendee at the very first CQ, or Leadership Seminar in the City of Celine, and it was initially put forward by Coalition for Equality Community, and I think they've just retained possession of the, of the entity over the years, I want to say that I think it's a very worthwhile project, and glad to see capable people are still carrying forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions for city clerk or for the, for our guest? Ms. Tahar?
Um, actually, I have a comment. So under recitals, point B, and we've said this before, we recognize the value of the SLI program in developing future leaders in the city, including, including those who may wish to serve on city committee, committees and boards. Perhaps we could look at a more systematic way or organize, build into the curriculum an actual recruitment for city boards and commissions as part of, as part of the SLI program itself. I mean, I know it's, it's encouraged, having also gone through it at one point some years ago, but perhaps we could do something more focused and specific.
We do have now a new element where the, the group identifies four key issues they want to learn more about or become more involved in, and then we have a panel of community leaders, which many of them are sitting here, and they come and answer questions, and then we actively solicit people to indicate whether they want to, you know, join Main Street or join, I think you got.
I did, I had several.
Several people this last session. But we could then add an element of, you know, specifically on, you know, commissions, if you'd like. I think that'd be a great thing to add. Yeah, so we'll look into that.
Great, thank you.
Always looking for ways of generating volunteers.
Any further questions? And Ms. Mitchell, for the public record, you'll be abstaining from this vote, is that correct?
That's correct. I may have a future affiliation with the Celine Institute, so I don't want to be voting on funding at this point. Thank you.
Very good. Your abstention is noted for the record. If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously with one abstention. Thank you, Diane.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
We move on now to new business item eighteen dash one twenty-nine, Huntington Woods Phase Three PUD Final Site Plan. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen memo from the Celine Planning Commission, and to approve or not to approve the PUD Final Site Plan for construction of Huntington Woods Phase Three with the conditions as outlined in the Planning Commission memo.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt for discussion.
Start with acknowledging receipt from Mr. Gierba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Rubel, do you want to give a brief overview, and then we will have Mr. Score and maybe some of his associates comment, and perhaps you can address some of the issues that were raised during the, the public comment period. Mr. Rubel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As shown here, the planning commission did review the staff reports, consultant reports, and did approve the preliminary PUD to pass it on to the City Council. They took the number of conditions and put them together. Those conditions are those that would facilitate transitioning from the planning phase into the construction phase to carry through on all the requirements that would ultimately lead to dedication of the utilities and the streets and guide the construction phase. So they saw fit to approve it based on the planner's recommendation and staff's recommendation.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Score, I would welcome you to the podium. I would also acknowledge that we do have the property owner, Mr. Shipman, in the audience this evening. Dave, we appreciate you being here. If any of you would like to make a comment this evening, we would welcome that, but we'll begin with you, Joe. Thanks again.
Good evening, Joe Score, Polty Homes of Michigan. Just want to say we're very excited about the project. We're looking forward to the continuation of the success that we're currently enjoying in Phase Two. I'm here tonight with our project engineer, Matt Bush, at that well. I'll take this opportunity to address some of the questions and concerns that were brought out earlier in the meeting. In, in terms of traffic, we have been notified of some concerns relative to traffic in Phase One, I believe relative to trades and subcontractors. We have been in, we've had multiple conversations with our trades. We're at the point now that the problem is not resolved, we are proposing the idea of additional signage and/or fining our, our, our partners, our trades, and our subcontractors. If that doesn't resolve the issue. In terms of destruction to landscaping or private property, this is quite frankly the first I've heard of that. I can assure you that if Polty is responsible for any damage to landscaping on any property, we will resolve the issue and do any of the necessary restoration work, absolutely, immediately. And with regard to the last comment, in terms of changes or modification to the plan, I can tell you with a hundred percent certainty that we have not changed the plan since our original middle several months ago.
I think the question specifically, Joe, was that Phase Three are single-family homes.
Correct, yeah. Single-family detached homes, lots.
Very good. Before I open it up for questions, because it's somewhat germane to this agenda item, Chief Hart, would you mind stating for the public record some of the steps that you and your department are taking to mitigate and control traffic and to increase enforcement in Huntington Woods, specifically Phase One? Within Phase One, excuse me. Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Thought it was up later in the agenda.
It could come up, well, it could, it could come up here, and it could also come up during Agenda Item eighteen dash thirty-one, but we'll, we'll discuss it now. One of these for each member of council?
Yes. Please. So I was, the question was proposed to me, what, do I have a clear understanding of the issues here within the development, and what actions have we taken as a police department and as the chief of police here in the City of Celine? So I was first aware of, made aware of this situation back on March nineteenth. I did receive a question in regards to stop signs at Newcastle and Arlington, also Newcastle and Huntington. Met with Director Fordice, we reviewed the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and determined that this intersections did not meet the criteria for additional signage. So myself and staff have been going out quite frequently. I go through there at least once a day when I'm at work, sometimes on my days off, to look at traffic, many times multiple day, multiple times through the day. And I see our, our police officers that are out there as well in our marked patrol cars. So they're out there doing traffic enforcement, I'm out there doing traffic enforcement, enforcing the stop signs. The challenge is, is much like any other part of the city, the key times for the traffic complaints that we're receiving from the residents is the same time that we're receiving traffic complaints on Henry Street, the tra, the plant traffic coming out of Farisha, Old Creek. So with two to three police officers on duty trying to divide our resources in the certain areas of the city, we do the very best that we can. What we have learned is that the speeding is sporadic through the neighborhood. I do have some data at the end of the memo that I created that, that shows averages. The speed sign has been moved, it's on its third location, and I feel it's at the best location. I've worked with Director Fordice over at the DPW to have a new speed limit sign put on Arlington that's mid-block closer to Monroe for the eastbound traffic. This is going to allow us to catch the most data without having spurious readings. So radars, there's a receiver and a transmitter within a radar unit, so it goes out and it picks up all kinds of things. It'll pick up, if you're just sitting there and there's no cars in front of you, it'll pick up the, the fan speed in our patrol vehicles. So I had turned up the, basically the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The sensitivity of the radar transmitter to ten, so I can capture as many vehicles as I can within Huntington Woods that were traveling eastbound. The first location of the speed limit sign, the electronic speed limit sign, was on catching eastbound traffic on the south side of Arlington, just east of Newcastle. Now, in order for me to catch the, the vehicles coming out of specifically the construction vehicles, A, they have to follow the, the identified route from Polty. That's not a police, you know, construction traffic route. That's something that's developed by Polty. So for those folks to come out of, the construction traffic would have to go down Huntington to the west, come around Arlington, and then exit out onto Monroe. I did have a complaint from one of the residents that now construction traffic was going down Newcastle southbound to turn left to go east on Arlington, and the speed limit sign really wasn't catching them. So against my better judgment, and to try to take care and alleviate the concern, I took the sign further down to the east, almost to Monroe, right in front of the model home, and I mounted it on the back of a speed limit sign, and it did catch a fair amount of vehicles, but it was towards the end of the street. So the sign didn't necessarily have the impact, being mid-block, that's why I got with Mr. Fordice, and we had the sign installed last Wednesday, and I personally put the sign up Friday before I went home. Officers were tied up with accidents around the city. So I, I think we're in the best place right now as far as the speed limit sign to collect data for the signs. It's what we pay the money for, and to look at the data. There is some averages that were put in that, of the reports that I ran. So between the speed limit sign, which is one of the gentleman, Mr. Weiss, who is in constant contact with me and, and I think most of council, is, this is the place where we can really have the largest impact and to get folks to slow down. So when they're coming through the neighborhood, the sign lights up, I have it flashing. So if someone does twenty-six miles an hour, so one mile an hour over the speed limit, the sign starts flashing. You get above thirty, and it should start strobing. So there's a secondary light, and I also have a feature on there to take a picture, so I could see what kind of vehicle. It's not the best picture, but it's something that could at least show me whether it's construction traffic, if it's a cube truck, something along those lines, or whether it's a passenger vehicle, and most of them have been passenger vehicles. So I did have one white cube truck that I had a picture of that was going a few miles over the speed limit, but then I drove through there today, and there was three white cube trucks, you know, at various slots. So it's a little challenging to identify that. So I think between, well, certainly our efforts have been, the speed sign, we're on our third, and, and I think our most favorable position to, you know, use the sign for educational purposes and deter people from speeding if they follow Polty's prescribed construction traffic route. And we're also seeing from Mr. Weiss, information that people are seeing the speed sign, and if they are speeding, they're slowing down. So that coupled with enforcement and visibility throughout the subdivision, and that will continue into the coming months.
Very good.
Kind of a long answer there, sorry.
No, and that, but that was helpful, because the impact that Phase Two and Phase Three have on the residents of Phase One is, is germane to the, the topic that we're discussing and hopefully will act on in just a moment. So I appreciate those comments. Are there questions at this time, again, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt. Are there questions for either the chief or for the representatives from Polty Homes or for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Gierba?
Actually, it's kind of related to the chief, because we're having to put additional efforts into the subdivision, and we've had to purchase another radar sign. I'm wondering if the developer would contribute to this issue, because part of this is getting to a point where we have limited resources, and putting all this effort into this area to maintain all of this, it's not only costly, but it jeopardizes the quality of life and benefits for other people within the city. And that's one of the things that I'm looking at, because some of this is also a civil issue more so than being a, a city issue. So perhaps because of what you've just mentioned, I'd like to hear what maybe the developer could address in terms of that, because if some of this requires us to put a permanent sign there, which were what, three or four thousand dollars, I'd rather see us have that as a result, because it's directly attributed to this being what we can almost call a nuisance to a point of, we should not be footing the bill for something that is not directly associated with overall protection.
If I could just address the issue of an additional sign, that's a loner that I have out on East Henry now with the white, or with the yellow background. I actually reached out to a friend who loaned a sign out from another company, so we still only have the two signs. I'm just trying to.
And that's what I mean, if, if we, if there's other areas in town that.
Sure.
I don't want to see that sign setting up for an entire year, so.
Yes, sir, and we had just at the last week's staff meeting, kind of proposed the idea of what, what policy could we propose on putting, on the public, putting a sign in the public right of way, you know, and using our sign as well in their neighborhood. If, if the developer or a neighborhood wanted to purchase their own sign, you know, what would our policy be on that? Because we do get a lot of requests for two signs.
Yeah, because I would almost like one in front of my house on Celine Arbor Road, which is twenty-five miles an hour, but it's never driven that speed, so.
And to reduce downtime on the signs, I did order four new batteries, so each sign has two batteries in it, and they last several days. It's a, it's a little bit more taxing in Huntington Woods right now, because I do have the camera feature on, now certainly we're not, state law prevents us from writing tickets from that, and due to spurious readings and, and other things, it wouldn't be prudent to do that. But we did order four new batteries, so our downtime is greatly decreased in the, in the, the use of the signs.
Additional questions for either the chief, Polty Homes, or Mr. Rubel? Ms. Dillon?
Has there been consequences? Have you been writing tickets? Is everything just verbal warnings? Are you actually stopping people?
There have been no tickets that have been written. I put officers out in the white Explorer, which has traditionally been the chief's vehicle. The threshold for officers is anywhere from, you know, five to ten miles an hour over the speed limit, and most of the indications are, the, the one day I had them out there for an hour and a half, I believe it's in the memo, they had one construction vehicle that was doing thirty, and then there were residents or visitors to residents' homes there that were anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-four miles an hour. So at this point, it's an educational piece with the construction employees and the residents there. I did send Officer Lupai out shortly after, I think it was the first or second week of May, to meet with the construction supervisors, to have a discussion with them on what our expectations are, that they'll stick with the construction route designated by Polty, and also drive the speed limit.
And then, can you just clarify about not meeting the requirements? Is that for stop signs? Is that what you're indicating in your memo?
The original request that I received back on March nineteenth was for stop signs both at Newcastle and Arlington and Newcastle and Huntington, and there's criteria that need to be met or should be met before you just place stop signs in. It shouldn't be, you know, just left up to someone's decision on whether they do or don't from day to day. So there's criteria, it's called a warrant, and that would be something that probably Director Fordice would be able to speak to a little bit more as far as the MUTCD. And looking at the traffic volumes, also noting the email communications that I'm getting from residents, it's exactly what my twenty-seven years of experience is. You put stop signs in, the idea is to slow folks down. We get, now we get a new enforcement issue, people not completely stopping at the stop signs, and then also they're trying to speed up between that stop sign and Monroe, or if up between that stop sign and Monroe, or if they're going into the sub, it's kind of counterproductive.
Can there be speed bumps put in?
There would have to be a lot of speed bumps put in, because my experience, also in another community, is that when speed bumps go in, unless there are a lot of them, that are a tremendous inconvenience, people do the same thing. They speed between the speed bumps. And it becomes more of an inconvenience, an issue for emergency vehicles, fire trucks, and things like that gaining access. Snowplows.
Thank you.
Additional questions? We have a motion on the floor, then. Chief, thank you. Appreciate your remarks. We have a motion on the floor moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt of the memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. As have, and the motion carries unanimously. How about now a motion to approve or not to approve the PUD's final site plan?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Additional comments? Ms. Dillon.
I just wanted to just clarify, and this probably from Mr. Ruble. It appears from the memo, there's 36 conditions that are outstanding still on the site plan? Is that normal?
Well, they're, they're not really outstanding issues. These are, these are items that will take the design phase, and then implement it into the construction phase, for instance, because the PUD, when the PUD ordinance replaced the CUP ordinance, and it, PUDs, I guess, just by their nature, do not require a development agreement. So we had to enter all of the development agreement type clauses into conditions in order to get them enforced. So that will carry through to where they have to provide easements, dedicate streets, provide for testing, inspection, reports, as builds, and so forth, because there's no, no development agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Additional comments? Mr. Girbaugh.
Just in that situation, a lot of it's administrative, but we've got, in this situation, three planners, not only our individual, but the city, and a couple other engineer firms. So we've got a lot of individuals going over this, more so than I think we've had, than we normally do, but in this situation, the number of comments seem a lot, but, because I always usually vote no against something like that, but in this situation, I think most of them were just more of a dotting the i's, crossing the t's, but things that have to be done before it permits, things have to be issued.
Additional comments? Mr. Hart.
Yeah, a question for Mr. Ruble. In your memo, you mentioned OHM Advisors was engaged, and, and that's not a firm that I remember hearing about in the past.
Right.
I just may not be remembering. So could you provide a little background on that, please?
We've been using OHM for about three years now, or more, but it's only at the planning commission level, because they are very good at reviewing details on water and sewer construction and design. And they've also looked at streets and grades, and helped meeting ADA requirements. So they've been instrumental in looking at the very intricate aspects of the design.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments or discussion on the motion? Ms. Dillon.
I just have one question for the city manager, just to, I guess I want to know, what is the next step for these residents in Phase One? If the city is not giving them really any resolve to their satisfaction, is this now need to become an issue between the homeowners association and Pulte?
Excuse me. Well, as Chief Hart mentioned, I mean, we're going to continue to do what we've been doing, to collect the data and monitoring, being out there from time to time with enforcement as best we can, again, as we would in other places, right, as we try and, try and spread our resources around the community where they're needed, at the times when they're, when it's in most need. So potentially, yeah, I mean, we, I can tell you personally, I would prefer that the homeowners association and the developer would get together and put their heads together and come up with a, an agreeable solution. I mean, they're, I mean, it's, to me, it's all about being good neighbors with each other, so, you know, with collaboration, compromise, hopefully that something can be resolved. But certainly, that would be, that would be in my perfect world, that I would encourage that wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Additional comments or discussion on the motion? No, then it has been properly moved by Seale, seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar, to approve. All those in favor of approving the PUD final site plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have, and the motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. We're moving on on the agenda to new business item 18-130, agreement with DTE, streetlight LED conversion. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 5, 2018 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve and authorize or not to approve the execution of a purchase agreement with DTE for the conversion of 98 high-pressure sodium streetlights to LED in the amount of three, in the amount of $37,240, upon review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to acknowledge...
Just to acknowledge?
And approve.
Okay. Move by Mayor Protem Tahar to acknowledge and to approve, and it's been seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. Mr. Fordice, do you want to briefly comment on your memo of July the 5th?
This will be our fifth round of LED replacements. This will complete replacement all of the mercury vapor and the high wattage, high-pressure sodium lights. After this, we will be approximately 60% LED lighting, 40%, 100-watt high-pressure sodium lights. And the payback, simple payback on this is just under four years. We'll save enough to pay off the cost of the conversion.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Fordice? Mr. Seale?
Where are these going to occur, Mr. Fordice?
The majority, so this is 98 lights. The majority of them are on Woodland, from Maple to just south of Teft Park, along Teft Court, and then on Maple from, did I say that right? I'm sorry, Woodland from Maple to, up to the rec center, and then Maple from Michigan to Woodland, and Industrial Drive from Michigan to Woodland.
Thank you, sir.
That's the majority. There's a couple of individual scattered ones throughout.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
So where are we in the process of conversion?
This is, so this is our fifth round, and at this time, we're going to take a pause, because the payback period on the 100-watt conversions is a fair amount longer. It has come down in price quite a bit over the past two years, so I'm hoping that by time we're budgeting for FY '20, there'll be a little bit further cost reduction, and we'll continue with the 100-watt lights.
So are you looking at doing most of these? Have they been done in residential areas, or are they just sort of pass-through roads?
Most of these are on major streets. So most of our LEDs are on major streets, because that's where the higher wattage ones are. The remaining, there's about 350 100-watt high-pressure sodiums, those are on more residential streets. And those have, almost none of those have been converted at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Subsequent discussion on the motion. Mr. Fordice, thank you. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Girbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-131, proposed ordinance number 805, to regulate construction activity. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Mayor Marl, and to approve or not to approve proposed ordinance number 805, an ordinance to add sections 18-45 to the City of Saline Code of Ordinance to regulate construction activity.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. Well, I'll make a brief comment, and then I'll bring Chief Hart up to elaborate. So as I stated in my memo, we had what I believe to be a very productive discussion meeting with some of the residents from Huntington Woods, Phase One homeowners association, probably about a month and a half ago now. And subsequent to that meeting, I learned from speaking to DPW Director Fordice, that we did not have a ordinance regulating construction activity. The only thing that we could find on record was a resolution dating back to, I believe, the 1960s or 70s, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, which really can't, can't be enforced. So subsequent to that, I thought it was prudent to draft a, an ordinance that regulated construction activity. As has been stated earlier, this is a quality of life issue, and there should be some regulations and restrictions on, on construction, particular commercial construction, or something of large scale in nature. So I spoke to the chief and to the city manager. The chief was very familiar with this issue because of his years of experience in Novi. The ordinance that we have drafted is, mirrors that of the City of Novi. So subsequent to receiving a draft from, from legal counsel, I provided a copy as a courtesy to Mayor Protem Tahar and Councilmember Girbaugh for their feedback, and we also forwarded a copy to the homeowners association of Huntington Woods Phase One, the planning commission, and the code review task force to receive feedback. Chief, do you want to provide some additional background, and perhaps address some of the questions, concerns that have been raised by council members?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this will help, and kind of give a different scale. There's 1,000 feet, and then 1,500 feet scale on there for reference, so you can kind of see...
Chief, if I may, real quick, because I failed to mention this during my remarks, because this has come up, this is, this concern has been raised by council members, as well as residents of Huntington Woods Phase One and elsewhere. The issue of sound and noise, which is currently regulated in a separate ordinance.
That's correct. Yes. So this is strictly pertaining to construction activity. Like the mayor said, after our meeting with the folks in Huntington Woods, it kind of struck me that we did not have an ordinance here, speaking with the mayor. We did have one, still have one, at the City of Novi, regulating construction activity, and it created a lot of relief for residents, especially in those areas that surrounded new subdivisions. So this really is no construction activity on Sunday, from 8:00 at night until 7:00 in the morning on other days, other than the listed holidays. This would be something the police department would enforce. We're the ones that are on the job 24/7, 365. So if this goes through, then I will be educating our staff members on the ordinance and the expectations that I have of them in enforcing it.
Very good. Questions for either myself or the chief? Counsel, let's start with Councilwoman Mitchell, and then I'll move to Councilwoman McClellan.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I was one of the council members who read this ordinance. I first spoke about this possible ordinance with Mr. Weiss, I believe, months ago, and I noted that our city did not have one, and said that, you know, perhaps in light of the development issues. And I also want to share a personal story of construction noise that my family experienced. So the schools undergo, or they did undergo last year, an intensive construction phase. They started at 5:00 in the morning, they finished around 8:00 or 9:00 at night. So I would be awakened by trucks beeping and a lot of equipment at 5:00 in the morning, and I worked downtown at the time, and so I would go downtown, and I would have construction noise from the US 12 project all day. And so I was surprised by the amount of wear and tear and stress that causes it. It's documented. I want to note, I just did a quick search, the City of Novi has almost 60,000 residents, and we have under nine. Is that correct?
About 90, 100, 9200.
Right. We are a different area. We are rural, we're a quieter area. This 1,000 feet distresses me, because I experienced, within that zone, distress. And I, I think that this exclusion takes the purpose and ruins it of this ordinance. I, I have, I took time over the weekend to read ordinances myself, and I did, I see that there's a diagram with a 1,500, I think I found one diagram, one ordinance with a 1,500-foot exclusion, but the majority of them just did not have that exclusion at all. And I think to advocate for neighbors, not only just in Huntington Woods, but with all of the building we have going on all over the city, and we're trying to infill, I, I think it's a disservice to have this exclusion at 1,000 feet. I'll be interested, I have an open mind. I'll be interested to hear what my council members say. Thank you.
Can you comment on that, Chief?
I think that's kind of why we're here tonight. If you feel that it should be 1,500, or 2,000, or 2,500 feet, or no distance whatsoever, I think that that's council's role as policymakers, and we will enforce whatever ordinance that you all do or do not pass here.
I would just note, I, I would not be comfortable not mentioning number of feet, but I would be amenable to a compromise if you had an alternative suggestion. Councilwoman Mitchell.
I don't have a suggestion at this time. My, my thought is to remove it entirely, because there's precedent in other communities, and I think that anytime there's excavation, it's the backing up of trucks. They have different pitches now, for different trucks, and it is wearing, it's stressful. And I think as a service to our neighbors, we ought to strongly consider not having this exclusion at all.
Ms. McClellan, I believe you had a question or two?
Yes. I guess, you know, in, in reference to what you were thinking of about construction, I mean, there's constant construction traffic, right? But a lot of it is streets, a lot of it is government agencies, schools. I don't know that the schools would fall under this ordinance, correct? They would not, because it's a governmental, so they would have an exception. So while I think, yes, it causes stress, and yes, you know, we need to be as neighborly as we possibly can be, we also have to be aware that, you know, stuff needs to get done. And so I guess my thought is, you know, 1,000 feet, especially now looking at these drawings, is, I mean, potentially, someone can be working on stuff as much as they can during the hours that are acceptable, but then, you know, they can move out to the further distance and, and not be within the 1,000 feet. So I guess, I think I'm okay with 1,000 feet.
You're good with 1,000.
Yeah, and actually, you know, the Sunday thing, too, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm aware that, you know, people want to have peaceful Sundays and stuff like that, but I also, I mean, as someone that frequently works on Sunday, and I know a lot of people have to work on Sundays, that that's time that needs to be available for people to get stuff done, too. So, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it being there on Sunday, but I think there's a balance there between being neighborly and making sure that some place is peaceful, for people to live and work and play, but then also balancing that with being able to get things done. Because it's, the sooner you get the construction done with, the happier everybody is when it is all finished.
Yeah, and I get that, and I actually, I initially had the same concern when I reviewed the policy from Novi regarding the exclusion of Sunday. But I thought about it from the perspective of somebody who lives in an area that is under construction, and it's every single day. And I think that having one day where you're guaranteed not to have additional noise or nuisance, again, I think that directly ties to one's quality of life, and I think it's important. So additional questions? Ms. Dillon, and then Mr. Seale?
Okay. My question actually stems from the point one, which is the construction activity in connection with the single-family residential structure, and is being conducted personally by the owner of a property. I don't see the difference between a construction company and owner, as owners of property can rent excavating equipments, and air guns, and lots of other big equipment. So I'm not very comfortable with that clause in there. I think the rules, it just needs to be a blanket, this is what our rule is, is, in my opinion, I, I don't know why we would want to exempt individuals from the process.
Can you, Chief, can you, because we did discuss that. Can you talk about genesis for how that came about?
Especially when you, you look at the situation in Huntington Woods, that's an ongoing, constant construction activity that's going to, to build the sub. If I have a roof leak, and I'm savvy enough to repair my roof, and I'm out there operating a nail gun at 10:00 on Sunday, should I be excluded from doing my own repair? And, and it's not that it's an ongoing, continuous, you know, building of a, of a structure, you know, throughout the week. It's more of a, kind of a, a single construction-type project.
I appreciate that, but there are many ongoing home improvement projects that are years-long, and so that's where I'm concerned.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments? Mr. Seale, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I think one important point that kind of I glossed over, so if I'm a homeowner, and on Sunday morning, or any time, I get out my table saw, and wheel it out in my garage, and start cutting apart two-by-fours, and start creating that singing noise off the saw blade, and it exceeds the decibel standards in the noise ordinance, I can still be asked to quit or be cited. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So there is that other outlet for people who are offended by ongoing activities, too.
Additional questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just a kind of a statement on that, because I, that was the reason that when we looked at this, is the fact that we had the noise ordinance issue, because it does penalize an individual that does their own construction, work on their home, and so if you try to deny that to them, it's almost, it's kind of denying them one of their rights. And so you've got to be very careful with it, and I'm more from the perspective of, it's the noise that generally will disturb someone, because I know of a situation where somebody starts... Because I know of a situation where somebody starts up their table saw at 10 o'clock at night and the neighbor's been listening to it underneath their bedroom window. And so that was the example I presented. And I said, well, how do we deal with that if it isn't under the construction? And he said, that definitely falls underneath the noise ordinance aspect.
Well, here would be my suggestion, because it looks like we do have some concerns, although it appears, or I'm hopeful that there's at least four votes to approve the motion that's on the floor, moved by Seale, seconded by Gearbaugh. Assuming that this motion passes and the ordinance is adopted, Chief, perhaps you can make a mental note or write yourself a reminder to maybe provide us an update in six months just to let us know how this, how we're doing in terms of enforcement. Have we received complaints and are there additional tweaks or modifications that may be necessary to this ordinance?
Absolutely.
Sound reasonable?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
One more question. When we're talking 1,000 feet, I'm thinking of an example, it normally would be in the industrial park where they could build on a, they'd be exempt from this if there's no residential around it. Now I'm thinking Michigan Avenue and there's Berwick Park, which is not that far from our industrial park, where we have a lot of construction going on right now. That would be applicable because I think they're within 1,000 feet of that property. So I just want to clarify. So that does mean some of our major projects will have to shut down and be in compliance when this goes in place.
If there's no additional discussion on the motion, it's been properly moved by Councilmember Seale, thank you, Chief, appreciate the background. It's been properly moved by Seale, seconded by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it and the motion carries six to one. We move on to new business item 18-132. This is employment agreement, city manager. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 3, 2018 memo from city manager Campell and to approve or not to approve the employment contract with the city manager for a period of July 1, 2018 through July 30, 2019 and to authorize or not authorize the mayor, city clerk and city manager to execute employment contract as submitted.
Move to acknowledge, approve and authorize?
Hold on just one second, Ms. McClellan. Okay, it's been properly moved by Councilwoman McClellan to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dahar. Mr. Campell, any comment?
None. Well, I guess just that you may recall that with the recent changes for appointing administrative staff, so this is the, all the other officers, department heads come underneath the city manager. So in the past, of course, it's been the whole litany of non-union folks, but now it's been reduced to the city manager and the police chief that would be appointed by the city council on an annual basis.
And if I may, very quickly, because I think Mr. Seale, if I recall, you're the one who raised this concern. Page two, section five, termination by employee. Did you raise this as a concern, Mr. Seale? Yeah, I'm impressed that you caught it and not Ms. Dahar. Employee may terminate his or her employment with the city of Celine by directing written notice of termination to the city manager. Well, the city manager is not going to tell the city manager. So it was suggested to change it to mayor and city council, but actually mayor's redundant because mayor's a member of city council. So I would just change it to city council. So that change can be made without objection. Okay? Are there questions? Ms. Dillon?
On page three, subsection C, the annual contribution, is there any kind of tax implication or issue with making a direct payment into that? I'm just trying to figure out, because it's in lieu of a merit, so wouldn't it be, it's not taxable in any way?
I think it is. So it would be that less contribution, so.
Okay. So it's this amount less taxes. Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, I guess for me is understanding that contribution. Had we discussed that previously or is this a new feature that's being addressed this year in this contract?
No, this was, this was just what I had proposed. You may recall, so I stepped out two years ago and so then the policy has been for non-union employees that they are qualified for a merit. And so I didn't think it, certainly it's not appropriate, I don't believe, for the city manager to give the city manager a merit. So this was my way of suggesting, I guess, equality that if council sees fit to add that to the agreement.
Okay. And how does this defer, I guess, what I'm looking at, how does this contribute or affect any, I guess it doesn't because you weren't eligible underneath our pension aspect where it's those kind of calculations anyways, correct?
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to figure out how, by giving this, does this affect your overall calculation and so forth?
No.
Okay. Part of my thing is just understanding this tonight and not having seen this prior to this, kind of raises the question of how it was put involved and who came up with it. My other question, I'd like to make an amendment to include the dollar amount of the new salary in the actual motion itself. I think we've been consistent with that in the past and I think it's really clear that we need to make sure that that information is communicated to the public.
I have, I wouldn't object to that. How would you like to see that enumerated in the motion, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Oh, where does it say? It sets it at the, the mayor, kind of execute the employment contract as submitted with the salary, with the new annual salary of 128, whatever the figure is.
What are the, yeah. What are the?
That's the place.
It's right.
It's in the memo, I thought.
128009.
It's in that, right.
So here's how I would read it. To acknowledge receipt of the July 3, 2018 memo from city manager Campell and to approve the employment contract with the city manager for a period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 at a salary of $128,009 and then to authorize. You comfortable with that, Mr. Gearbaugh? Let's, perhaps we can do this a bit more informally and deviate from Robert's rules. Ms. McClellan, would you accept that?
Yes.
And Ms. Dahar, are you okay with that? Enumerating that in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. And I would assume, Mr. Gearbaugh, it would be your preference to enumerate the salary in the subsequent motion as well, which is agenda item 18-133. Okay. All right. Additional questions? Comments? Discussion on the motion? They'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Dahar to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it and the motion carries. We move on to new business item 18-133. This is employment agreement with the police chief. Can you pull the memo so I can get the salary?
97160.
97160. Okay. So this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 3, 2018 memo from city manager Campell and to approve or not to approve the employment contract with the appointed staff and officer for a period of, period of June 1, July 1, excuse me, 2017 through June 30, 2018 at a salary of $97,160 and to authorize the mayor, clerk, city manager to execute employment contracts as submitted.
To acknowledge, approve and authorize.
Second.
Yes.
Are the dates wrong?
Yep.
Oh, God.
2018 through 2019. Yep. Let me reread it.
Okay.
To acknowledge receipt of the July 3, 2018 memo from city manager Campell and to authorize or not authorize the employment contracts appointed staff and officers for a period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 at a salary of $97,160 and to authorize, not authorize, the mayor, clerk, city manager to execute employment contracts as submitted.
Move to acknowledge, approve and authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Mr. Campell, any comments?
I think, I don't know that I've heard any negative comments from the time that Chief Hart's been here. He's certainly moving forward and as we had hoped, taking the department to that next level, what that level's going to be, but certainly happy he's here and I think he continues to do a terrific job and I know that he'll continue to do that. This was, you may recall, that he's staying, that we went up a couple extra steps in the salary and for his agreement that he would stay it, that he would not have an increase going for this next year, so it actually will be for 18 months versus 12 months.
Very good. Questions? Comments? Ms. Dahar?
Just a question about the wording of the motion. Why are we saying appointed staff and officers and not saying police chief in the text of the motion?
Is that what you did? Okay. Let's, again, if the, if my colleagues will indulge me and will deviate from Robert's rules, yeah, that's just, we copied and pasted from last year's motion. So if Mr. Gearbaugh and Councilwoman Mitchell are amenable to this, here's how the motion would read. To acknowledge receipt of the July 3, 2018 memo from city manager Campell and to approve the employment contract with the police chief for a period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 at a salary of $97,160 and to authorize the mayor, city clerk and city manager to execute employment contract as submitted.
Same thing, move to acknowledge.
No, no, you're good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to make this, yep, yep. I apologize for making this convoluted. Okay? Mr. Seale?
I had a similar question on page two, number five, term. Should, it says December blank, 2018. Should that be July 1, 2018?
Yes. That change can be made without objection. Did you hear that click row up? Okay. All right. Thank you for catching that, Mr. Seale. Additional questions? Comments? Discussion? It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you both for your service and we look forward to you continuing, continuing, excuse me, to maintain a standard of excellence in, as it relates to effectively meeting the needs of the people we represent. Thank you both. New business item 18-134, resolution to appoint staff. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing staff for a period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seale. Mr. Campell, any comment?
This is, you may recall, this is required every year, but because of the change, it used to have the list, the entire list of the city officers, but because of the change that council made earlier this year, it's simply, it's the city manager, the police chief, the acknowledgement of the fire chief, as well as the city health officer.
Questions for the city manager? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Did we stop including salaries in the printouts? I know at one time we used to do it and I can't remember what we did last year.
Based on, I thought that was going forward, this was the format, but we can certainly do it, put whatever format that the council would like.
Usually, I mean, we used to put that information in, but I didn't know, I couldn't remember, I thought we kind of dropped it, but I was just asking for a reference if it's not in there from last year. It's fine.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Additional questions, Ms. Dillon?
The health officer? Who is that?
It's Dr. Singh. He's a pediatrician who's been practicing in the Celine community since I was an infant because I went to him as a baby, a toddler and as an adolescent. He used to work in the professional building, now works, now leases space from Evangelical Homes of Michigan in the old hospital. And we need a health officer mainly to sign off on some grants that we request, I think specifically through the Parks and Recreation Department.
For our state licensure?
Okay.
Okay.
In the past, that individual has maybe made some presentations or provided information at, what's the health committee, Health and Wellness Committee?
Right.
Yeah.
Is it actually on, is that person on the payroll?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And actually, Dr. Singh is new. It was Dr. Spiegel for many, many years and she retired as the city health officer and was my responsibility to recruit somebody else and I'm very grateful to Dr. Singh. I'm sure he'll do a fine job. If there's nothing further, it has been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Seale, to approve and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-135. This is paint bid award. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 3, 2018 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs and to approve an award or not to approve the bid from Martin Painting and Coating for base bid one in the amount of $88,200 and alternate number one bid in the amount of $9,500 for a not-to-exceed amount of $97,700.
Move to acknowledge?
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. Director Scruggs, do you want to comment on your memo of July 3?
Yes. So the memo is a summary of all the process of the bidding and essentially we received one qualified bid, references were checked, verified, Mays reviewed and approved the bid proposal and attaches his evaluation memo. We're asking, this is the second phase, you know, first we completed the roof project, now the second phase was doing the painting, the interior painting. And what we're asking for is the approval of the base bid number one, which is essentially everything from the deck down to the cement board, so all the joists and all of the duct work that is between the ceiling and the joists. So that's the base bid. And then we asked for an alternate, which was a painting of the walls from that level up high down to the floor. And that came in at $9,500. So we're asking for council to approve the base bid number one and alternate number one for the total of $97,700. The cost is covered with, by the bond. We are well within our estimated costs. We're actually 1% less than our estimated costs. So we're here asking for that.
Are there questions for Director Scruggs? Ms. Dillon?
Of course I have questions. Your memo mentioned about Mays being on-site. Are we paying them to be on-site?
No. I mentioned that he's going to check in a couple of times. The project is about a seven-week project, so he's going to check in a couple of times with the contractor and with us. Daily oversight will be my staff, which is Brian Spro, our building maintenance, and my facility manager, Keith Cooperman, and myself will be there on-site monitoring the situation.
So why does Mays have a dog in the fight if they're not being paid?
They, this was part of the original bid.
Okay.
Originally, the painting was bid out when we bid the roof project and we did not get any qualified bidders for that. So they rebid it for us.
Okay. The other question is about only getting the one qualified bid. I believe your memo said it was due to your timeframe. Is there a reason why we're not adjusting the timeframe then?
We're trying to not, the pool is going to be shut down during this project. So we want a short timeframe to get this project completed. And one, I didn't go into all the specifics of why there was only one bidder. We did reach out to ask some of the others what the situation was. Timeframe was one. Their cost, our cost estimate was, they didn't feel that they could match that. And I think primarily is because they didn't have or own the equipment that does all of the prep work, so sandblasting, all of the joists and everything. If they don't have that equipment, they have to subcontract that out and then that drives the costs up.
And then are there other costs associated with this? The draining of the pool, the refilling of the pool? What are those costs?
That's, primarily it's the water, the water costs. I don't have a real estimate I can get that for you. And then time, our staff time to do that.
So I guess I'm just concerned, once again, going with the only builder, bidder syndrome. Is, are we putting an unrealistic timeframe out there if contractors aren't willing to take it?
No. This is a very, a very good timeframe. And regarding the one bidder, Martin, I called several other rec centers that have done work for them and I also contacted the city of Columbus, who is under contract with them currently with 25 different projects that are actually going right now. This is a very large company. They do a lot of work in facilities like ours, in school facilities, where they do have tight timeframes. Obviously, schools are closed for only so many months out of, you know, for the summer. So they're very well-qualified. Everyone that I've talked to was very satisfied with their work. Mays has worked with them quite a bit. I talked to one of their work, Mays has worked with them quite a bit, I talked to one of the other major contractors that subcontracts them for all of their painting, and obviously, they do a, a great job because they keep them on-board and keep them working.
And how are you notifying members about the pool being closed? What's going to be the, the loss of revenue based on that? Are you giving discounts? Are you, are you offering any consolation for that seven-week period for those people that are not going to have access to the pool?
Right, you know, we've, we've had several larger projects, for example, the Nanitorium project where we were closed for about four weeks in the pool area, we have kind of a process for notifying all of our members and, and the public and, and the schools and everyone that would be affected. We do not currently plan to offer any type of a discount, the right, the main, or the regular part of the facility will still be available for use, classes are still going, we will not be scheduling our water aerobic classes or swim lessons during that time, so there, there's no, we're, we're not refunding money to anyone, we just don't have it scheduled during that time. A lot, and, and, you know, one of the reasonings that I have for not offering some type of a discount is, pretty much every other facility are closed for two weeks out of the year all the time, every single year, from September, like Labor Day, as soon as the kids get back into school for a couple of weeks, and that's to do maintenance, to get larger projects completed, we don't do that. The last time that we were closed was three, four years ago now, so we, we, we haven't, we, we try to stay open as much as possible. For the roof, we stayed open, we worked around, or they worked around our schedule, so I, I feel that it's not unreasonable to, to not give a discount.
Okay, and is there a clause, a timing clause in the contract that if they don't meet the deadline?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar, for filling in for a moment. Additional questions for Director Scruggs? Any discussion on the motion, I believe it's just a motion at this point to acknowledge receipt, is that correct?
That's correct.
All those in favor acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve and, or to approve or not to approve and authorize or not authorize?
To approve and authorize.
Wait, 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 I'm not, it's just, I'm sorry, I'm on the second motion, Mr. Seal. It would be to approve and to award, so you're going to move to approve and award, Mr. Seal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, apologize for the confusion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Tahar. Discussion? Mr. Gierba?
I'm fine with the one bid, because right now, trying to get a contractor even lined up, we're kind of out of season, but the other part of it is, you can't get contractors in place, so the fact that we've got a response and that's within our budget, I think, you've done your vetting and everything, I'm appropriate, and I think this is fine to go forward with, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Then we'll proceed to vote, it's been properly moved by Seal, seconded by Tahar, to approve and to award, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Scruggs. Last action item of the evening is eighteen dash one thirty-six, this is the auction service for disposing of surplus equipment, this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 3rd, 2018 memo from City Manager Campbell and to approve, or not to approve the use of bidder G to auction surplus city equipment and vehicles with a flat seven percent on all final sales and authorize or not authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Motion.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Mr. Campbell, do you want to make a brief, brief comment of your memo of July 3rd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so the genesis of this is that we have a difficult time with, because it takes a bit of administrative time, right, to, to get everything squared away and organized and take pictures and, and, and put together descriptions, and, and so subsequently, unfortunately, a lot, a number of our surplus equipment and vehicles are kind of stacked up, if you will, and so we've been looking at evaluating different auction services, and so this is what is being recommended, and they, they come out and they do, they do all that for us, so as far as administrative, we put everything together in pictures and descriptions and whatnot, so that's, this is what we're proposing.
Questions for the city manager, Mr. Gierba?
Does this include, I mean, all of our equipment and, including stuff that might be the police department lost and found stuff, or how does that work?
Anything that's, you may recall, a number of years ago, council changed policy, right, to, because we used to have to bring every item to council
Right, right, right.
To declare a surplus, right, and so then, so that, that tells you how long things have been stacking up, we haven't, it's been a long time since I brought, given you a description of what things have been sold, right, that was a new policy for the city manager to do that, once things have been sold, as long as they don't exceed what we believe to be fifteen thousand dollars in value, if it's, exceeds that, then I, staff will bring it to council and say, get a recommend, a recommendation to declare a surplus, so...
This covers everything except for that, anything over fifteen thousand?
Correct, right, every, right, anything that would, would be certain, be determined to be surplus that we couldn't use anymore, and then, and of course, if, if it still goes un, unpurchased after the auction, then, I mean, there's some things you could actually, I mean, to, to give away if, if it's, you know, if it's appropriate.
Additional questions? Discussion on the motion? Been properly moved and seconded by Gierba and Mitchell to acknowledge, to approve, and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. Let's see if we can fly through this discussion portion of the agenda. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Ms. McClellan?
Just an announcement that the Parks Commission is taking nominations for the Green Thumb Awards, and you can find the nomination form, I believe, on the website and then in the lobby, so nominate your neighbors, your, there's business nominations and residential nominations, so get your nominations in and you'll start seeing the signs pop up around town, so.
Very good, additional committee, commissioner, task force reports. How about reports or other announcements? Then how about a wastewater treatment update? Baptism by fire.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
It seemed like a long time ago that I was up here.
It was, but we welcome you here for your first official wastewater treatment plant update, welcome aboard, we, I, I've heard great things already, Steve, and we all look forward to working with you.
Great, well, thank you. I'll keep it brief, I'm learning the processes, staff has been very helpful in getting me up to speed on what's going on, obviously, a lot of issues haven't happened overnight and they're not going to be solved overnight, but specifically with the odor control issue, we do have a motor that's been repaired for the odor scrubber that should be put in on Wednesday or Thursday by Goyette Mechanical. Additionally, we have the flare unit for the digester, the motor on that is bad, so we're getting a quote to get that repaired, that's a sole source item, so we'll get the quote and order that as soon as Mr. Campbell gives us permission, so we can burn off some of the spall gas from that digester unit. We are feeding chemical to the influent, I think that's helping, and other people may have different opinions, I don't have a very good sense of smell after being in the industry for thirty years, so I appreciate you folks letting me know when there's a problem, so I can try to see if something unusual is happening, but to ask me to determine that, I've, I've been around that so long that my, my nose is deadened, but please give me a call or email me and I'll, I'll try to work on that as soon as I can, or answer any of your, the residents' complaints and, and let them know we're doing what we're, what we can. E&amp;L Construction is going to set a trailer up pretty soon, they're the contractor for the odor control project, so we're looking forward to them getting on-site and starting to get this project underway, so we can all see some progress on, on the issue. Other than that, I'll open it up to questions if anyone has any questions.
Very good, any questions for our new wastewater treatment superintendent, Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, your honor, welcome.
Thank you.
So nice to have you with us. I wrote some notes during Mr. Loy's discussion period, one of them had to do with the amount of solids that, because that can't be laid on fields in the winter, we have kind of a buildup, so do we have an excess of, of solids that, did I hear that correctly, it caused some basket stress?
Yeah, well, there's two different issues, one is the amount of solids we have on hand is the amount of sludge that we create that we land apply as bio solids, so we get beneficial reuse, so we do have a backup on that, partially due to the wet spring that we had, they weren't able to apply it in the field during the spring. I spoke with NutriGrow last week, and they said that the winter wheat should be coming off in a week to ten days, which we're coming up on, that's five days ago, so I gave a call to them this morning, they haven't returned my call unless they've done it during this meeting, which is, is possible, so hopefully, within the next week, we'll start hauling the old sludge off-site and getting it land-applied, we'll get as much, rid of as much of that as we can. The issue with the filter is the sludge in the plant, and one of the problems in the plant is the technology that's used, that is a very old technology, it's not activated sludge, which causes the pinpoint flock to agglomerate better, this is a sloughing off of these discs, so you get a larger, kind of, they call it zuglio, zuglio mask, ma, yeah, sloughing, so that kind of is larger particles that can clog those type of filters, but that's just really a maintenance issue of pulling a basket out, cleaning it out, we have spares, we can put that in and keep it online, it probably was due to staff getting used to that process and understanding the need for that, but we do want to reduce the amount of solid, because we do have a lot of solids in our clarifiers that we haven't got, been able to get rid of due to the, the backlog with our sludge, so as soon as we get this hauled, we'll try to get the solids in our plant under control, so those odors aren't being emitted also.
And I don't, I don't know what other communities do, you know, we, we all obviously experience wet springs once in a mi, once in a while, I don't know if there's anything, you know, some forecasting to do as far as, okay, we're, we're kind of in a pickle, here's what we can do that can solve our problems, so that, you know, we're, we're not having quite so many complaints.
And, you know, I think what we'll try to do is, we're going to haul as much as we can now and try to have them come back in October and get completely empty, so in the spring, it's not such a, a problem, but this was very wet, I, I know it's been so dry now that it's hard to remember, but it was extremely wet in April and early May.
That's right, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Gierba?
So when you mentioned hauling it out and then coming back in October, they're going to haul everything out now in the next couple of weeks if they can.
That is our intention, to get, to get things drained.
To make sure that October's cleaned out, so we don't have as much in place.
Correct, so they're, they won't be full in October, whatever we have left there, instead of being in a bind, bind next spring.
So when's the last time we've actually had some sludge taken out, do you know?
Uh, two weeks ago, we had a hundred and ten thousand gallons hauled off, and they hauled it about seventy miles, because the field here was not available, so they'll be able to haul with this winter wheat coming off, I think it's about eight or nine miles from the plant, so it'll be a quicker process, but they did that as a, a favor, you know, it cost them a lot more to haul it seventy miles than eight miles, but they gave us some space, we're good for a couple of weeks, and they should be back within a couple of weeks, and I'll let Ms. Royal know before they haul, so you can let the residents know that there will be that, that additional smell and traffic.
So out of that capacity of six hundred and fifty thousand, I believe we have, how much, where are we now at?
I would guess, from what I've been told, we have, we're probably at like five fifty.
Additional questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dillon?
That's okay. Would it be possible, and I think this might be for both you and the city manager, that when we come to council, that we get a list of issues that are, like, so that we know which equipment, like, if we can even see it on a map, like, yep, X here, these are the pieces that don't work, so that we can sort of keep a running tab as to what's working and what's not, because I remember hearing about a motor, but now you're talking about there's another motor on something else, I, I mean, I, I kind of feel like we're driving, like, you know, a seventy-two, like, beat-up car right now, that's just constantly in the shop.
That's correct. One of the things that's involved in the, the SAW grant that, that's underway is, there's going to be, there's an asset management plan being done, and there's also a computerized maintenance, maintenance management system being implemented, so when we get that going, that will have work orders for routine maintenance equipment, so things that are done daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, and such, and it'll all also have a corrective maintenance component to it, so that, that's, you know, emergency-type repairs, so we could supply whatever type of report you would like on a monthly basis of, of activities at the plant.
That would be nice, to just have general information, so that we know, because, like I said, I know that, you know, you're not going to Costco and buying these parts off the shelf.
Right.
And so just timeframe is, okay, well, this piece is offline and it's going to be offline for eight weeks while they're manufacturing a piece, just so we have some sort of ballpark idea, because I feel like every time we're having these discussions, there's, there's broken parts, and I don't know if they're new broken parts, or if they're just the same broken parts that just haven't been fixed yet.
Sure, and I think something to remember, there's a lot of pieces of equipment between the two plants, and, and then also the pump stations.
Right.
So, yeah, I would encourage you, I, I don't know if you've toured the plants or, or not, but I'd be happy to take you through, after I've been there a little while and I become more, more familiar with it.
No, that's fine, and then my last question is, are we accepting sludge in, we are not? Okay, because there's a lot of...
Do you mean septage?
Septage.
No septage right now.
We are not accepting anything in.
Why don't you clarify that? Yeah, so, if I, if I could, so, septage is the stuff that, I mean, we have the ability to, when people have a, a septic system, right?
Right.
And, so septage, so sludge is, is what we have.
Our byproduct.
Correct.
Yes.
So there's, there's a...
I'm sorry, I, I misspoke.
No, no, that's okay, I just, I know it gets certain, you know, people, they throw those around, and, and especially when it kind of, when it, at least, when Mr. Skoll was here, he always took issue with, with, and I would sometimes misspeak and say, well, how about, you know, the sludge, he's like, no, it's septage, so, so any case, so, but yeah, that, that's just a, just a note.
So we do not accept?
Currently, and one of the things with septage is it's hauling, you know, pulling out of your tank, so it does have a very high solids content, because the point of a tank is to capture the solids and have the liquid portion go to the, the leach field, so it's a really high-demand, smelly
Right.
You know, product that you're bringing in with, with our backlog of solids right now, it's not advisable, and the odor problem.
Right.
It doesn't make, doesn't make sense, but that's, that's your decision also.
Okay.
Okay?
No, thank you.
Additional questions? Steve, thank you, appreciate your time this evening.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Campbell, do you want to briefly touch on the strategic planning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, may recall, there was some discussion as a result of this most recent strategic planning, to, to move it up to where we normally, typically in the fall, and so that, that's what this proposal is for, and also talked about bringing back Dr. Lou Bender, and so, again, this is proposed from, from Dr. Bender, or as a lot of us refer to him as Lou, he's been around a, a long time, and, and a lot of us have, have, whether it's taken a class from him, or, or obviously, we've used him here for a couple of years, a few years ago, for strategic planning, as well as a, kind of a, to have him facilitate a meeting with, between council and, and, and senior staff to, to talk about expectations on both sides, that type of thing, to, to work better, to, to increase the cohesion of the team, if you will, so that's what he's, is being proposed, and so staff would recommend bringing Dr. Bender back to, to do these, these activities to, for the strategic planning.
What dates is he proposing?
They're on the bottom of the first page of the memo.
Yeah, October...
I have the memo in front of me.
Yeah, so Monday, October 22nd would be the team strengthening, five thirty to nine, mayor, council, the mayor, city council, city manager, and department heads. Tuesday, October 23rd, five thirty to nine, mayor, council manager, department heads to the initial draft of the strategic vision, strategic vision and, and goal areas, so that's where we do our pre-planning, if you will, discussion, and then Tues, Tuesday the 30th, October 30th, from six to nine, let discuss, with the community comes in, right? Shared vision, yep, and then, then Monday, November 26th, bring it all together, from five thirty to nine.
Timeframe seems as close to ideal, I think, as you're going to get. Anybody have any objections, concerns, otherwise this will be added as an action item at our next meeting? No? Okay, very good. Do you want to briefly touch upon organizational review RFP?
Sure, thank you. Again, this is an item that was on the result, I think, actually, Mr. Gierba is the one that had originally suggested it during budget discussions and, as well as strategic, strategic planning, and so this is the draft RFP, if there's any changes to be made, I would, as my email when I sent this out, I would like to make those changes tonight, so we can send this out tomorrow.
I was fine with it, it covered, I mean, it's going to be pretty genetic, but I at least identified specifics and included the information that I wanted to see covered, so I think it's good to go. We'll see what kind of response... I think it's good to go. We'll see what kind of responses we get.
Anybody have any concerns?
No.
So, you'll submit it this week then?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Finally, Huntington Woods Connecting Sidewalk. So, I've had conversations with each of you regarding this subject. And as the current president of Huntington Woods Homeowners Association Phase One indicated during his public remarks, a connecting sidewalk has been something that has been discussed and proposed since Huntington Woods was first initiated in the early two thousands. And in working with Mr. Shipman, the property owner, with the assistance of legal counsel and Mr. Campbell, I, we have come to a tentative agreement. I'm going to distribute paper copies this evening. I would ask that you review this document and contact me directly with any questions and concerns that you may have. Because my goal is to have a clean version on our next council agenda, which we, would be July sixteenth for approval. So, again, you've got about two weeks to let me know any thoughts and concerns.
One week, next week.
One week. Oh, excuse me. Okay. One week is probably sufficient. If not, we could postpone it. But yeah, again, I would welcome your, welcome your feedback. And Mr. Shipman will also be on hand to, to address any questions and concerns that you may have. If there's nothing further, and if you need electronic copy of this document, you're welcome to email the clerk's office and she'll be happy to provide one. If there's nothing further to be brought up during the discussion portion of tonight's agenda, we come to these, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I have one question I wanted to ask, and I apologize to the clerk for not asking it earlier. With the block party and that tent being in the street, are we, is there a clause in there that says that there cannot be alcohol served? Because it's in the street at that point? Is that clarified?
I'm not sure if it's in the agreement, but I will make sure that I get ahold of Mr. and Mrs. Coy and make sure that they realize that there's no alcohol allowed on the street.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we come to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Please.
Hello. I'd just like to point out right away that this is a purely informative speech. I'm Will Minnet, Life Scout and Rising Junior at Saline High School. And I am informing you of the Eagle Project I'm intending to do over the next couple of weeks at Hennyfield. I'm working with David Rhodes and Chief Heft to set up a privacy fence around two portable toilets around at Hennyfield in an effort to beautify and just make Hennyfield look nicer for the general public.
Very good. We appreciate you sharing that, Will. We appreciate you being with us till almost eleven o'clock.
Dedication.
Yeah, dedication. Good luck with your project. And I'm sure, working with former council member Rhodes and Chief Heft, you will, you will complete something that will be beneficial and appreciated by, by many members of our community. So, thank you for your time. There are additional citizen comments. Please note upcoming meetings. There are no absences this evening. So, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at ten forty-three P.M. Moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. This meeting is adjourned.